Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is November 13th, 2019. It's approximately 8:34 PM. I call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise and salute the flag with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberate and just.
Could you please remain standing for two moments of silence? One, first is for former resident Albert Heldenbrand, and also for Bonaventura Pulice. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
Councilperson Woo?
Here.
Sung?
Here.
Sabari?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Alversa?
Here.
Oh?
Here.
Her attorney?
Here.
DPW superintendent and municipal clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Could you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Okay. So, thank you for doing that. Just want to bring everyone's attention that we are still collecting non-perishable food items for the office of concern, food pantry. When you walk in, there's a box in front of the police department in the lobby. Please donate. This is an especially important month to collect food. It's Thanksgiving Month, and the people who run the food pantry are just wonderful, dedicated volunteers, and they look to us to help them. And I know that George McKenna, who's in charge of it, is very grateful to all of your efforts. And so the box will be there through the week? Is that right? Through the week.
Sunday, those people.
Right. So if you don't have anything today and you want to drop something off, the police department lobby's always open. Just drop it off there. There's a lot of people in Bergen County who work and are still food insecure, so we're trying to help them. Department had reports. We received all those at the council. I don't know if anyone had any questions. Mark Neville from DPW is here. Thank you, Mark, for being here. Thank you for picking up all the leaves. I appreciate that. Town's looking good. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Neville? Okay. I know you've had a long day, so feel free to leave whatever you want. And if there's something that you want to report to us, please do so.
It's been a busy season. I appreciate every patient who's already in the community, who's already struggling with their health, but things have moved on. It's been a really long wait. PZG has to shut the gates anyway, because they were going to be open. We'll look forward to finishing off over there. Getting it before the end of the year. Getting what you're putting ready. Ready to go.
Okay. I noticed in other towns, I think Englewood also, they have a leaf vacuum truck, and it seems like a very efficient process. And basically, I think you're picking up the leaves with a front loader, putting them on a truck, bringing them to DPW, offloading them, and then unloading them to another truck, right? So I just wonder if you've looked into that?
Yeah, a little bit of a truck that some of the towns are using or getting, which we are using, it's a multi-purpose truck. That truck they still pick up the leaves on, it comes back and that truck moves off. And using other ways, other boxes.
Okay.
It is a budget issue, budget item, that is a little costly, but we do definitely pay.
I'm just wondering if we could even rent it during the height of leaf season, because it seems like a very efficient process. The driver, actually, I think, controls the entire process, right? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Let me just take a look. Let us know. All right. Anybody have questions for Mr. Neville? No? Okay. Thanks. So feel free to leave whenever you want.
Put some heat on.
Yeah, put some heat on. Correspondence, we received correspondence from Attorney Brian Shukowski regarding 530 Summit Street. There's also correspondence from the PBA to all residents and to me as mayor, I believe. That was dated November 3rd, 2019. Minutes for approval are the caucus at regular October 16th, 2019 minutes. I believe they were distributed to council.
Need a motion?
So move.
Second?
So this is a motion to approve the minutes.
Second? I'm sorry, who seconded it? I did.
Counselor Odenel.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Before we open to the public, I just want to thank everyone for re-electing me. I really appreciate it. I'm here for you. Thank you. That's okay, Terry. You don't have to clap. Congratulations to Councilman Woo for re-electing.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
And also congratulations to former Councilman, Mr. Ramon Farrow. I congratulate the candidates who ran also. It's hard to do. It's a hard thing, win or lose. It's just one of those things. And I'm hoping that, as a community, when we run campaigns in the future, everyone, candidates and supporters and active employees who want to participate in the process, off duty, of course, that they focus on attacking issues and the records, not on attacking people, okay? Let's try to do that. Let's create a new culture here. And then also, before we open to the public, I just wanted to mention regarding our affordable housing litigation, that the trial is still pending. You know, it is what it is in New Jersey, but the biggest culprits of the whole affordable housing morass is the legislature. The legislature has let another year go by without acting to solve the problem. They still depend on the courts to do that. And I don't think there's any judges who actually want to be municipal planners, but that's the role that they've been forced into. And I feel, I don't feel that those judges deserve that kind of treatment. You know, it's not fair to them either. So what I'd like to do is to, I'm going to have everybody who wants to, call your legislators. Call Loretta Weinberg. Our senator is a senate majority leader. Think about that. She's in charge of the senate, and she's not doing anything regarding this issue. Gordon Johnson, Valerie Huddle, those are your assembly representatives. They're not doing anything either. There's actually a bill that was introduced back in March of this year that's just sitting there, waiting for action, and it puts a one-year moratorium on all affordable housing litigations so that the legislature, legislature could take a deep breath and deal with the issue, and that the judges could actually have a reprieve from having to deal with it also. And what needs to happen here, and I've kind of summarized it for you in a document I'll pass out, is you and your friends, people at home who are watching this, need to contact Loretta Weinberg, Gordon Johnson, Valerie Huddle, and tell them to start legislating. That's what they're there for. You know, it's nice to show up, they ask for money, they ask to vote, they come and swear people in, but that, the rest of the year, they should be working, and they're not. They're not. They're so busy trying to sue the federal government for one thing or another, sue the president for one thing or the other, you know, create sanctuary cities, create sanctuary states. Meanwhile, all of you are suffering because they're just sitting there trying to do the, you know, the glamorous political soundbites for the media. So, you know, be respectful, but be stern. Write to them, contact them, email them, and keep doing it. And keep doing it, all right? Because they're not going to know this the first time. And if you want to organize a protest, I'll be there with you, because this is completely ridiculous what's happened in New Jersey, all right? So I'm going to pass those out. And what we'll do is we'll open to the public now, and this is something that Ramon Woo and I decided we would create for you as a simple way of going forward, trying to solve the problem. Will I do the cloud motion to open to the public?
Second?
On a favor?
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, just raise your hand, and I'll recognize.
Can I get a copy? He's giving it.
It says something to leave ruin and suffer, so we haven't seen it or heard about it.
It says so much for working.
Sure.
Yes.
Angela Chen, 22, Sarah Hilling. Angela Chen. I have a couple of questions, so got this agenda, and the first thing caught my eyes is 14 litigation closed session. Do you mind just briefly explaining, because, you know, everybody's thinking that litigation costs the town a lot of money, and I want to understand what is these litigation about and what is the status for it? Can anyone briefly talk about this?
Sure. That's a good question. So where Kranjak appears as a plaintiff, I am suing on my own dime to get information that I should have anyway, because I'm the mayor. But for whatever reason, the council, our clerk, our attorneys, not just Mr. Marinello, the other attorneys also failed to provide that to me, so I'm trying to get that information. So that's not, that's not money damages that are being sought. I'll let Mr. Marinello speak to the others.
It's not entirely true that it's not money damage. Just had a hearing yesterday on whether or not the mayor was entitled to attorney's fees for an Oprah case that he filed, so it's not totally accurate.
Well, again, if you just provide, I mean, you guys all pretend that I have no authority to get information, and I've asked for it, I've written for it, and then I'm just as surprised as the public is when I find out that there's an MOU that's been signed, right?
Yeah, so you took my lead from two years ago? Is that what you're doing right now?
No. You weren't entitled to a lot of information. As mayor, I am.
So does that mean if you want to see the MOU, you need to file a lawsuit?
Now, the MOU I eventually got, but the correspondence leading up to the MOU, and by the way, there's also a negotiated settlement agreement that we all read about from Normandy's papers, right? I haven't gotten that either, so.
Actually, the lawsuit that was the subject of the fee discussion was an attempt.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sure. Okay. The lawsuit was about obtaining the email log of Mr. Wunsch. That's what Mr., that's what the mayor sued for.
That's one of the things.
Well, in that case, that was the only thing.
That's one of the things, right. And the reason why I wanted, uh, Wunsch's email log, obviously, is because he's just a renegade doing things on his own.
Well, again, that's, that's an opinion.
And you're asking for attorney's fees for that?
Well, I don't know if I am or not.
Well, we had a hearing yesterday on the actual attorney.
So the other litigations involve a resident who had a tree fall, or his claims that a tree fell, I'm not sure, because we never heard about it until recently. There's several police officers suing, and some residents suing under Oprah as well for failure to produce documents under Oprah. And Oprah, for everyone here who's unfamiliar with it, is the Open Public Records Act that permits you to ask for non-privileged, non-confidential personnel, non-personnel materials and information.
So is any judge going to rule on this, or it's already ruled?
Now, those are our private.
These are active cases. Those are our private. They're all before the courts.
So that means someone's asking for information, and the council rejected, and that person got the, get to sue the council.
No, it's not the council. It's rejected.
Who's who rejected?
It would be the records clerk.
The records department?
Right. Well, so there's, right, there's the records clerk who rejects things sometimes.
So Mrs. Dubby?
This is Duffy. But then there's also the attorneys who, under direction of the subcommittee that we keep hearing about for COA, they instruct the attorneys to not provide information.
That's actually not true at all.
Well, they give me information.
Not true at all.
Amber told you not to give the email to me.
So, 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 no, no, so then, why don't you just provide me with the information?
The vast majority of the cases, I'm sure that you're asking genuinely to know the answers to these. The vast majority of the cases ask for a lot of material, of which good, good portions of it are either attorney-client privileged or personnel-related, which are not to be given out under the Oprah statute. So that's why things sometimes are denied when somebody asks for an Oprah request. And people have a right under Oprah to file a lawsuit to convince the court that it should have been given out.
So if, say, residents want, you know, we pay the property tax, we, you know, we contribute to the town, right?
Right.
Do we have the rights to get the information that we deserve?
As long as it's not attorney-client privileged or otherwise exempt under the statute.
You can claim anything as attorney.
No, I can't. No, I can't. I can't do that.
So, I mean, seriously.
I mean, if you ask for a letter between me and my client, it's likely to be attorney-client privilege, but it may not be.
Living in this town.
Have you made any requests that have been denied?
I have.
Okay, so.
I really want transparency, right? I want everybody to understand that.
Right.
We want to fight this case, right? Everybody deserves to understand the truth, right? So a lot of times that we feel that's a black box, right? I saw, you know, the science fact, backroom deal. How, you know, how do I know?
Because, because.
And then you don't get information, so.
Well, you haven't been denied any information, Mrs. Chen.
Shall I, shall I just request something?
Help yourself. I mean, if you want something, ask for it.
You're entitled to it.
And if you have a problem with it.
I thought someone has requested.
Yeah, you're right, Mr., you're right. Yes, it got rejected because the Oprah statute says that unfiled depositions are not public records to be given out. He doesn't accept that, but that's what the law is.
Well, actually, you're going down the right frame of mind here, because there's Oprah, which, yes, there are restrictions, but actually, I represent the client, right, as the mayor, and I'm still not getting information at, at the mayor level, which is outside of Oprah, so. So that's the game that's been played all year, and that's why I'm standing here today.
Anyway, I have a second question. You mentioned Al Wunsch?
Wunsch.
Wunsch. What is, what is his role, and what is his qualification of, you know, that he is allowed to be engaged in this?
Engaged in what?
Engaged in this lawsuit.
Which one?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. He's been involved in it since he was named the borough attorney last January.
Who authorized for that?
Who authorized him to do it?
Yeah.
The council authorized. They voted him as the borough attorney. I believe the question was also, what are his qualifications? Do you remember? Hold on. No, no.
Well, the, the affordable housing law is such a specific law in New Jersey that people, unfortunately, make their entire careers doing this type of law. This is all new to Al Wunsch, right? So a good night's sleep at a motel sits at a bar exam doesn't get you to be qualified to do this.
Yeah, it's amazing. This is the guy who wants everyone to work together better, and then he turns and says that. I mean.
Has he ever dealt with this kind of lawsuit before?
No.
He's been in the town for a very long time. He's this historian of Englewood Cliffs. He knows all the ins and outs. No, but there are things, there are questions about overlay zones and things of that nature that he is very experienced in. And he is also a trial attorney, so let's not, you know.
No, from, from my perspective, right, I, you know, I'm paying the property tax. I know that, you know, we have to hire some real, real expert.
We have two attorney, we have two attorneys on that case with him, who are two of the foremost attorneys in the state.
I don't want to waste my tax money on someone. So we, you know, I think we should hire someone who has dealt with this.
We have.
And who wants, who wants the case.
We still have.
You know, I, I, I just feel, honestly, like, I feel that, I understand, Mr. Sabari told me that a lot of town has settled, but not a lot of town settled with this kind of condition, right? So I heard, like, cluster, they fly.
Because they never went to court, so there, there are no conditions. They settled, and it was done amicably.
There were some places went to court, right?
There's been two trials.
They lost terribly.
There's been two trials.
They lost terribly.
But then, why don't we hire someone who is really?
We do. They, they were on those cases, the guys we have. You're just getting nameless Mr. Wunsch, but there's two other attorneys on those files. Mr. Serenian, who is one of the foremost affordable housing lawyers in the state of New Jersey, and Mr. Troutman, who's a very good litigator.
If you're two that's expert, then why would we want four, right? That's another several hundred, seven, eight.
Yeah. You know, that's a good question. I've been asking that all year.
That question was asked this evening, and, you know, the, the answer was, by our professionals, that in fact, he actually was a benefit to this case, and that they felt that he was needed there. So this is coming from Serenian and Troutman.
He's approving their fees, so it's all a potter of loot here.
I think the resident brings up a good. He's just making allegations again, Mayor.
I, you know, I, I, I hate to say this, but, you know, just, I, I hate politics. You know, I'm a working mom. I, I have to work because I have to afford, you know, so much, so much expensive.
I ask you why?
Right? So I really hope that my property tax is using a effective way to help us, right? Not to waste our money, you know? If you guys ever consider, you know, just to hire someone who's more experienced and help us to win the case, right now, it's, you know, I, I truly believe we shouldn't settle. I truly believe, because the settlement, to me, sounds doesn't make any sense, right? So if we settle, we get 80 affordable housing units. If we build on Hudson Terrace, we have 77, so then, it's three units difference. Why we settle for this, right? So it doesn't make any sense.
Right. That's not correct. It has not been finalized, the number.
I understand, but, but still, but the, but the July 10th meeting, the slide told us that if we, kind of, if we saw the slide on the board, it says it's 400 units and 80 is affordable housing. That's what was proposed in the July 10th meeting. I saw the slide. So I was like, you know, it doesn't make any sense. It's 77 units, Hudson Terrace, and then even this is not satisfying the obligation, but that 80 number doesn't satisfy either, right? So it really doesn't make any sense for us to settle and get another 320 more Marquee units. It just doesn't make any sense for us. So that's, that's my feel. Like, I, I just really don't think we should settle for this. And it's, it's, you know, I totally get it right now, right? So the judge may rule really, really against us, right? I understand that. But we still have the right to appeal, right? So I really hope that, you know, maybe New Jersey Supreme Court is not the place for us to fight the battle. You just should unite, and we should just go appeal somewhere else. And, you know, I, I, you know, I worked, I worked as a financial analyst. I know the case of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, right? They lost the case because Treasury, United States Treasury ripped off them, and then they took away all their profit from, because they saved Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac in, in the credit crisis, right? So they, what happened is the, the government paid $200 billion to save them, right? And then, but, they returned $300 billion to the government, and the government still swept out all the profit, and they lost, and the shareholders of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mae sued, sued, and then they lost this first time, the second time. And they finally won in the Supreme Court, because that's the shareholders' rights, right, to get the money back. You saved me, yes, you gave me $200 billion, but I paid you back $300 billion. That additional $100 billion belongs to me, right? You know, I grew up in China, right? It's a communist society. That's why I'm here, because I believe in capitalism. I don't believe people just taking things away from random people, right? Like, to me, I feel this trial making me feel that, you know, people are just trying to get things from me, right? Other, you know, it's not only the property tax, also that's, the housing price has dropped, right? So, and we all have kids, right? I know Ms. Sung, Ms. Sabari, Ms. Hart, you all have kids in the private school, and then that's impacted the school a lot. So, you know, I moved here thinking this is a nice town to live. I don't want people to be ripped off. So why don't we just unite and we fight, okay? If, if we lost in Supreme Court, federal, right? Okay, I accept that, then this may be not the country for me to live in. But, so, I still want you guys to listen to us, because, you know, I just don't want the settlement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
This lady just, I couldn't hear her, but she did say something about 77 units.
Yes, sir. Just mention your name and address, please.
Ken Bowen, 178 Millsix Avenue.
So can you use, can you use the other microphone?
The little microphone? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I couldn't hear. Can you hear me now? Is that it? Like the commercial, can you hear me now? All right.
Can you use the address, please?
Ken Bowen, 178 Millsix Avenue. I asked the same question about the 77 units at the upper school meeting, and it said it wasn't relevant. Now, does that, from my point of view, so bear with me, is that I'm kind of confused with a few of things. The 77 was, was sent, sent, was stated at one time, then at the meeting, they said was not relevant. Then, at the, excuse me, before I begin, I want to thank both parties. You ran a good campaign. I have to say that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
But you ran a good, honest, you made statements, you dealt with the issues and the facts, not personals, very well. At your breakfast, I spoke with Russell Perino, very funny guy. Can I talk about you? He explained to me how the overview of 800, he kind of diminished, and rightly so, the number of acres would, would also diminish presumably the number of units that would apply for fair housing. Does that equate with the whole situation? I guess I have two questions. The statement that the lady made, very nice, with the 77, is non-relevant. It can't be substituted for 800 at, at the second meeting that I went to.
So the, the 77 units was 100% affordable housing plan that we had put together last year.
That was your counter.
That's, no, that was actually what we led with. Well, we were suing, and then we led with that at the.
Oh, okay.
Because we were trying to solve the problem on our own, right? So 100% affordable, no market-based units, nobody makes money, right?
I don't know. I'm asking you to respond on that. I have some direction.
So the 77, we thought that was attractive to the judge, because she actually led us to use the Affordable Housing Trust money to start that process.
So she put it back in our hands to come back to counter.
Right. And, well, so to speak, we, we did that, and then in January, this council came in, and everything changed. The, the Hudson Terrace Plan, the 77 in the plan, was stopped, and the council tried to settle. Okay, that's not correct. The council tried to settle. Hold on, if you could have a chance, the council tried to settle, right? And they had an MOU, memorandum of understanding, for.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, this happened to public, okay, sir. So they had 400 units, and 20% of them were to have been affordable. So now what just happened? You scrapped the plan, and you took another plan that you wanted to pursue until the public turned on them, and in that plan, four out of five units would be market-based. One out of five would be affordable. So someone, and a lot of people are making a lot of money in that plan, so this is what we're, we've been up against. up against. Now, if the 77 wasn't enough, we had other options to bump that number up to satisfy our requirements. Yeah, we did.
That's not true.
We did.
All right, all right. Now, she's saying, if I may, can you explain to me?
There was 77 in that plan.
Now, Mayor, you said...
Deborah Sabari.
Sabari. Um, you said it was, it was dropped. The 77 was eliminated? Why? Or, uh, no, you were sorry.
It wasn't eliminated. We were told by our professionals that it was unacceptable, that 77 would not do it. And there was no Plan B, C, or D, as the mayor has said. I've sat in those closed sessions. There was no other plan. The mayor was asked for other plans. He didn't have any.
You, that's not true. We actually had...
So, remember on the table...
Hold on. I'm gonna call you out, and you lie.
We had...
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Let me finish. We had, we had B, C, and D, because we actually had a praise on that on other properties.
And allegations against me and the rest of the...
No, and, 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 sir, I can't hear either one of you. You're both broken. I can't hear you. But, one more time, please. The person who controls the attorneys...
Oh, shoot, with all due respect, all right.
The person who controls the attorneys is the council. The attorneys did exactly what they wanted them to do, okay? Last year, with the same attorneys, we actually had a plan. This year, we were...
The plan didn't work.
All right. What was the plan?
Their plan was 77 units.
That was the plan?
That was their plan.
That was the plan.
That was the plan, and they went out to the public for any opinion, by the way.
It was voted on. You voted for it.
It did not.
You voted for it.
The planning board pushed that to stop, so they're going out to...
Excuse me, excuse me. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I'm not lying.
Can you have a minute, please?
Yes, because you reached out to the community to get them to come out? No, you didn't.
All right.
No.
Excuse me. With all due respect, all right. We have a little declaram and civil matter here, please. One at a time.
All right.
All right. Right, Mr. Perino.
The council.
All right, please.
Public, you need to have...
But they're hollering. My question, and you're giving me an answer that I cannot hear, with all due respect, Mayor.
Did you hear the answer?
No, when they were hollering.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we got a lot of confusion here. I mean, uh...
The 77 unit plan was voted upon by the planning board.
By the council.
By the council as well.
Okay.
Okay?
In January, that was, that was your proposal.
Everyone approved it.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right.
We approved it.
You can go on to counsel. Okay, we approved it, because we, we had to approve it at the time. That's the plan. No, and then we went to the professionals.
Really? Really?
It's true. Okay? That was what was in effect at the time. Was it not, Mario?
That plan was approved by the same professionals.
Yeah.
The same professionals, and you're now saying, say, "Don't do it," were the ones who put the plan together in the first place.
Right.
You know?
I'm sorry.
I have to tell you, we have Normandy's attorneys sitting in the back of the room once again. Okay? No, no, hear me out.
I'm trying to hear. I'm trying to hear you people up here.
Where residents get up and have these comments, and they want us to basically answer and give information regarding what goes on in closed session, okay? And we couldn't give out that information.
That's confidentiality.
And the judge, we had to vote yes on a plan, because if we voted no, there'd be no plan, and then the judge would just automatically decide what our plan is. So, we had to go in with a plan.
Okay.
Did we know that that wasn't enough units? Yes. So, we had to come up with what it is we were gonna do to satisfy our obligation. I mean, it's so complicated that I could sit here and speak here for two hours.
I know it's complicated. I'm just trying to shed a glaze of insulation here. And with all, again, now, going back to Russell. Russell, I'm gonna be talking about you. Is that all right? No, no, you know, he made very, to me, he made some valid statements. He took the number of acreage and divided it with certain, he diminished it from, uh, what is it, 20 acres or 24? How many total acres?
28.
28. All right. He, very, very cleverly and correctly divided it with parking and so on, other facilities, and he said it would only equate to 20 acres. Uh, 20 acres as opposed to 28. Am I on board, Russell?
I'm not sure.
If you're done, I'll be happy to speak.
All right, okay. Okay, all right. From what I, from what we spoke about, and you said it was only about maybe, it was even less than 20 acres, I think. Um, all right, I look forward to you coming up here and explaining, you know, but I think it could have been 70. Um, I think the bacon got in the way when I ate that, but, uh, all right. Now, all right, again, I'm just trying to, in my mind, and, you know, there's a lot of hostility, and I, I don't mean to argue with anybody. I don't want to argue with anyone, but I don't like when people interrupt. I like to speak, hear me out, and rebut, or answer. But, I think we have too much hostility, too much, you know, just, Mayor, with all due respect, we talked about a, um, an MOU. An MOU, as opposed to running away, an MOU, it's gotta be ratified, memorialized, and I think with our thing, with an MOU, that's a memorandum of agreement, of understanding.
The, the MOU...
Is a memo, a memorandum of understanding.
The memorandum of understanding was not authorized by the governing body. The subcommittee had it signed without bringing it back to me and to the rest of the council.
Okay, all right. Now, it was...
It wasn't ratified.
No, it wasn't ratified, was it?
But it was signed.
All right, all right, now, all right. And I understand, it's not ratified. With all due respect, Mayor, and I'm not arguing here, I just, I know from my point of view, in the past, a memorandum of our understanding is presented, should be voted upon, should be ratified, and until then, it doesn't wait, hold any weight, from my understanding now.
Okay, can I add one thing?
It's really, it wouldn't be binding, but if you're telling the judge, "I signed it, and I signed it," it's binding.
It's an intention of a future agreement.
And we signed it.
But we signed it, but to your judge, that you're telling, "We're going to settle," and then you have a July 10th meeting, and you go back to the judge and say, "Hey, Judge, we're not settling the way we told you we were going to," number 1, and number 2, "We didn't do anything with the 77 unit plan. That's why we're here today."
If we go back to the judge, we're, hold on, hold on.
You're just making that up, Mario.
Wait, 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 hold on. You go back to the judge, and you just don't say that, and you just don't sit down and negotiate. We have a counter, and we write the present to you, and our counter would be B, C, and V. Now, we don't seem to have that. I know at the meeting, the second meeting that I attended, this fine gentleman spoke very well and eloquently, and everybody in the room approved to fight, uh, Servant. Now, I don't know where we are. Russell told me we could diminish the number of acreage, which would diminish the number of units going forward. And all I'm looking for, I'm not looking for everybody to argue, intervene. I would just like everybody to sit down, make a statement, and not interrupt. Let that person answer. And then, if you want to rebut or whatever, fine. But we don't seem to have that. And, I mean, there's no need to applaud, please. It's just common sense. Everybody's got something to say. It's the most important thing to that person to say what they have to say. But then, give the person the opportunity to answer. Do we go forward with that? I still don't know where we are. This gentleman, he filed for paperwork. That's great. I don't know where we are. All I know, we seem to be in limbo, and I understand you cannot divulge what's going on.
There's a trial. There's a trial. It's open to the public. It resumes, I believe, on December 4th.
And where would I be?
Hackensack.
Hackensack at this...
Hackensack, okay.
You're welcome to attend.
I think, uh, we got an uphill battle with, uh, and don't take offense to us, Democrats, but Ryan Burger, Huddle, Johnson, women's gonna shot. I mean, and those, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Yes. Since your name was used so often.
Russell Perino, 220 Fervin Avenue.
I'd like to correct a few misstatements I think I heard this evening first. While I was participating in the affordable housing litigation during 2018, there were other plans, and I'm not sure what this council or this subcommittee has seen. Other plans and sketches were developed. They're on paper. I don't know what happened to them. If you invited myself or Mrs. McMarlowe, as I asked probably 5 or 6 times, uh, this year, maybe you would know what they were, right? Different locations, property that the borough owns. So, Councilperson Sabari, I'm not saying that you're not being truthful, but I'm telling you that you're wrong, because they're on paper.
With all respect, we don't have those.
Well, again, that's why, and that's exactly why you don't block out the folks that were representing the borough as volunteers for, in my case, a year and a half. These are the sort of things that you would have heard from the members of the, of the, of the community versus the professionals. I don't know what they showed you or what they didn't show you. I'm telling you that they're there. Mayor was there for some of those meetings. He knows that they exist. Whether they disappeared, I can't tell you. But that's the, the fallout, when you think you know it all and you block out people who have lived at for the past 18 months. I've said this many, many times. I'm sure you've heard me. This is what happens. I'm not saying that you're lying. What I'm saying is, you missed opportunities where you could have seen what these other optional plans were then and even today. You may still need them, and if you're sitting here saying, "I don't know anything about a Plan B, C, or D," you all have a real problem here.
Neither did your mayor inside of those closed sessions.
Well, that, yeah, that's not true, because your professionals knew, Jess Serenian knew, Mike Mestreda knew.
Those were your professionals.
No, they're also yours. But you told them, you told them what you wanted them to do, and they did everything you wanted them to do. You know why? That they wanted to get paid. That's why. They'll do anything you tell them. And we need to replace them also, by the way.
Sir, with all respect, stop with the allegations.
It's New Jersey, it's politics, it's money, okay, and it's construction. So, let your imaginations wander from there. So, I'd like to know if, if this council has plans to do anything a little bit differently, right? This three-person subcommittee that has, has operated since January seems to have some issues, right, in terms of transparency, for sure. That's, that's a real big one. But, I'm a little concerned. I've been to the court, the trial, I'd say probably 6 different days. Not all days. I've stopped in, stopped out, when my schedule permits. I'm seeing Mr. Wunsch there, and I'm not here, Mr. Wunsch took a bit of a beating here tonight already. I gotta tell you, though, he's sitting at a table. You're right, Mr. Barry, he's not sitting in the back. There's no active participation. He's not taking any notes. He's sitting, and he's listening, and that's fine. But my question for you is, what role is he playing there? If there's not an active participation, is he coming back to explain to the subcommittee members or to the council as a whole as to what happened in trial? Could you give me an update, sitting here today, where we are in the trial, in terms of the witnesses that have appeared so far, and if the borough has rested its case? I mean, these are the kind of things that you could speak to, right? The trial, what's happened from the beginning of the trial to today is public information. I, I think the members of the public would like to know, what the heck is going on in Hackensack? I happen to know, because I'm out there.
Mm-hmm.
But why not, if, if, if our Wunsch is there, and that's his only job, which seems to me, his only job is actually to report to the subcommittee, quite frankly, and if that's his job, then why doesn't he do that? Why isn't a subcommittee and say, "Hey, here's where we are. Here's what's happened so far." If we're paying him that kind of money, he should be here to explain it.
They were here.
And in the back, the, the public isn't tired to know status, right? And not just wait till the trial's over and say, "Oh, we won. Oh, we lost." I mean, that's, I think, a disrespect to the residents.
I don't think there's any disrespect meant to, that's, that's not the purpose of him not speaking. I mean, we are still in trial.
That's right.
So, what's happened so far?
Sir...
Update as terms of the chronology, as the borough rested its case.
And he has updated us.
And he's upstated you, but then why is the public completely in the dark about what's happening?
They don't have to be in the dark, first of all.
They don't have to be. That's my point.
It, it's public record. All the, you know, you really have, you have a lot to say, Mr. Mayor. You don't know how to stop yourself from saying it, either.
Can you, uh, can you give them on that?
Yes, on the status of the litigation. You could do. You were just given it. The litigation, there was, witnesses were put on by the borough and by Fair Share Housing and by 800 Sylvan. The next phase is going to be the master's report. She's going to be testifying in December, and then there will be written summations sometime at the end of December. I don't have the dates, because, you know, I'm not the attorney on the file. And then they're expecting that some point in the early part of the new year, there'll be a decision by Judge Farrington on the issue of the RDP for the borough. I know you know this all, so I'm...
Actually, I believe in that, I really, except for the, the time that I'm spending there, I don't know.
Okay.
Anything about the, the schedule, for instance, I wouldn't know that December 6th is the next...
I'm not sure. I don't know what date.
If that's, no, December 4th, December 4th.
And then I think there's a second date for her scheduled for the 12th.
And we, as the borough goes, we've put on 2 witnesses. Um, Normandy's put on 5 so far.
4.
No, it's 4.
Fair share.
And that's a full amount of...
Well, Fair Share and Normandy together put on 5.
Right.
Right. The borough put on 2, I think, so far. Right. Okay, uh, I think we've thoroughly vetted the MOU and the part that the subcommittee played in that. Um, there's enough evidence in public records filed on E Courts that the subcommittee authorized Mr. Wunsch, I think it was, to sign that MOU. My next question is, who authorized the authoring of the settlement agreement and the, and the ordinances?
There's no settlement agreement.
So, there was one reference in the, in the papers?
Mr. Versu, you're saying that there was no settlement agreement that was drafted?
No, a memorandum of understanding. That's a settlement.
And that's where it stopped? In other words, it didn't go into a settlement agreement?
Never went any further to my eyes.
I never, I never saw it.
He never came out and brought anything to the council to sign or agree on. It never got...
That's a different, that's a different issue. Now, you're, now you're being clever. There was a draft of a settlement agreement. I did not see it, and, by the way, I found out about that.
I never saw it.
The first time in September.
So, I don't know what this is.
Right. So, someone, you know, Wunsch or whoever, was taking the MOU and converting it into a settlement agreement. And the deal was, if you recall back in May, when, when this council wanted to have a meeting, would only have professionals speak here, and then you could have another meeting later where the public could speak? If you go back now and you look at the court records, what was supposed to happen at that first meeting where the public was not allowed to speak, they were going to approve the settlement agreement that night.
But you know that that's not possible.
Okay? But they were gonna approve it, okay?
Now, you're saying that...
So far, what they've written about that kind of thing has been accurate.
No, there was an email.
The county's a perjurer. I think they're not gonna lie about that.
Actually, it's, excuse me, if I may finish. Mr. Wunsch authored an email that was made public in the, in the litigation, and that email speaks specifically about his desire to get the, the, uh, the process done at 1 public meeting and not 2. So, that's not coming from the, uh, 800 Sylvan experts. It's coming from Mr. Wunsch, the attorney for the borough, right? So, let's just clarify that that's the case. Um, one last thing, too. In terms of acreage, and I've said this before in, in a, in a public setting, the 800 Sylvan folks are arguing that there's 20 acres available for their affordable housing project, right? There was 28 acres altogether, 8 acres for Unilever, 20 acres available for affordable housing. Our expert, Mr. Mestreda, has testified that he feels that number is approximately 15 acres. The reason is, the Unilever property requires parking, that they cannot fit on that 8 acres. So, in order for Unilever to be self-sufficient and put their parking on their own property in the future, that leaves less than 20 acres for the affordable housing. So, that's where the number 20 goes down to theoretically 15, if Mr. Mestreda's, um, testimony is agreed to by the court and by the special master, and we don't know, obviously, if that is the case or not. And that's specifically the issue that the planning board had back in day 1, was because Unilever wanted to park, excuse me, Normandy, 270 cars off-site on someone else's property. So, that is still in, in, in play in trial as we speak, about what the size of the land is that's available for Normandy to build on. And the size of the land obviously determines the number of units, right? Because the density is the density. The acreage is what really is the, is the moving number here. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol McMarlowe, 489 Summit Street. I, um, I'm going to just talk about some documents that I only just learned about yesterday from E Courts. Um, Ms. Sabari, I continually keep trying to give you the benefit of the doubt. Um, I agree 100% with Mr. Perino. We've told you repeatedly that you are incorrect. We've told you repeatedly that you are incorrect in your statements. Whether you received the information or didn't, I'm not going to comment on. I can say to you that we have made ourselves available. And you had a fiduciary duty to take myself and Mr. Perino up on that offer as the people who were in the trenches since December of 2017 with this matter. And you've reached your fiduciary duty, all of you, for not allowing us to assist you in this transition. You made, in my opinion, mistakes that I don't even know if you can come back from. But I'm going to bring what I just downloaded off E Courts. And I would like to know from each and every one of you, who has seen this document? Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna wanna know that answer from you too.
Which document?
Um, I have to, 800 Sullivan is a wealth of, of information. Because all I keep finding the information from is from 800 Sullivan, okay? Because they seem to be the one that keeps putting up all the information that our Borough government is hiding from us. Um, these are interrogatories that were pro...
Go over to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. These are interrogatories that appear to have been propounded by 800 Sullivan. And it says, Borough of Englewood Cliffs responses to interrogatories propounded by intervenor 800 Sullivan, Avenue LL6. So that means 800 Sullivan gave it to the Borough for the Borough to answer honestly and give back to 800 Sullivan. Am I correct so far, Mayor?
Sounds right.
Okay. So, and this was uploaded onto E Courts on 11/11/19, I just saw yesterday. So first of all, most interesting on, uh, with sort of, with any type of interrogatories, all the lawyers sitting up there will tell you, interrogatories should, should always have a certification to them. Because otherwise, you don't know, really, who prepared them. Um, this does not have a certification, and it was given to Tom Troutner's office, who, who did sign it then. The first question is, who prepared these interrogatories? And they have James Barbario, the person that you fired after 30 days when you took office. And they're saying that he prepared these very important answers on these interrogatories.
What's the date?
The date signed off is November 30th.
Uh, 2018?
Sorry, 2018.
Okay.
And it says that he prepared it with counsel. But it does not say which counsel. And for, for myself, and I think the residents are gonna wanna know, given what these answers are, um, which counsel? I'm assuming it wasn't you, Mr. Marinello. You weren't even around it. Right, then.
I think Amory was here until, what, end of January?
I'm not going to make, uh, it says counsel. It could be Mr. Troutner, whose name is on here. It could be Mr. Serenian.
Just so we're clear, what is the title of that document?
It says Borough of Englewood Cliffs. It was B, it was Exhibit B1, so you know.
Okay, but what is it called?
It's called Borough of Englewood Cliffs responses to interrogatories propounded by intervenor 800 Sullivan.
It's from 2018.
These, uh, it was signed November 30th, 2018. Yeah.
Signed by Troutner.
It was signed by, um, there were document, there were documents and answers.
I suppose...
And nobody signed it.
Submitted by Troutner. There's no signature at the bottom, but it's submitted by...
So, Troutner said Barbario prepared it, but nobody signed it.
Nobody certified it.
Nobody certified. All right. It's from November 2018.
Right, okay. And it doesn't say which counsel. It leaves, inadvertently leaves that out. Okay, so I just wanna go to what really caught my eye here. On, on number eight, which is page nine. State the names and, and state the names and addresses of all persons having knowledge of any facts relevant to any claim you plan to assert in this action. For each person, indicate the subjects of which the person has relevant knowledge and blah, blah, blah. The Borough goes on to answer, you know, after they put their normal objections to everything, but then without waving all objections, they go and they state their answer. They go and they state individual, individuals with knowledge regarding the sites in Englewood Cliffs relevant to the development of the Borough's fair share plan. Mario Kranjak, Mario Shaich, Edward Aversa, Gloria O., Mark Park, Ellen Park, William Will. Wow. You left off Carol McMorro. Where's Chuck? You left off your affordable housing liaison for two and a half years? Who put all of that plan together with Mr. Perino? You left that name off your interrogatories?
You know what?
Who, hold on.
Yeah, we have, this is the first...
Good. I'm, I'm bringing it to your attention. Hold on.
And we'll find out which counsel actually submitted those papers.
Well, it says, no, it says, it says Tom Troutner, uh, Councilman. It says Tom Troutner.
He was the one who submitted it.
Well, he was, he was also employed by this Borough in November of 2018, and you weren't on the council any longer. Maybe that's why it's not...
Hold on. You're not making excuses for him yet, right? Or I'm just giving...
No.
I'm not making accusations.
We, this council here didn't file those papers.
The different control of the council in November of 2018.
I'm getting to that, sir. Let me, let me, let me put all the pieces to the story. It's amazing what you find out at E Courts, okay? So it's shocking to me, regardless, that my name is not on there. I met Mr. Troutner, Troutner once, and I saw him in court. And everybody knows I do go and I watch the trial. I still sit in the public portion. Anybody's allowed to go. I was in, I was introduced as the former council president. He knew who I was. My name was not on there. And it's my opinion that it was intentionally not put on that document.
Yes.
Okay? That's number one. Number two.
Was that attached to a Normandy filing? I'm not...
It's a B1 exhibit. Yeah, they, they attached a lot of documents, there's all...
So that, that's something that was created in 2018?
Let her finish, please, people. So, Council members...
I really would like, yeah, and I would really, thank you.
You guys had control.
This has nothing to do with...
It's okay. Carol, go ahead.
Thank you.
That's what we wanna hear.
Then there was another letter that I, and I saw this letter prior to this. This I saw yesterday. And I had attached this letter to an email of mine that I wrote to Mr. Troutner on August 26th of 2019, when I got my second subpoena from Normandy, okay? The letters that I attached were from a filing that the mayor had, um, when he filed, I'm not gonna even try to quote why he filed, I guess it was to get the information for, uh, the affordable housing trial. And the mayor attached an email or a letter that he received from Mr. Troutner of August 19th, which I'm gonna read into the record. Dear Mayor Kranjak, this is from Tom Troutner's office of Keesa. We have been instructed by the Borough's legal department that until such time as the governing body has an opportunity to discuss your demands at the September meeting of the governing body, the Borough, which is what you guys are, does not authorize our firm to produce to you all of our communications, quote unquote, "with anyone" since November of 2018. I gotta tell you, that strikes me really odd. Because none of you were in control in 2018. You did win the election, so you knew you were gonna be in control. So now you have Troutner writing a letter, and I have a lot of questions, and I'm looking forward to hear the answers on this. You have Troutner writing a letter on August 19th telling the mayor, he's been instructed by the governing body, which is all of you, not to release information to him on communications from November of 2018. And I'm saying to myself, well, why wouldn't he wanna give the mayor communications from 2018 of November? Because the mayor should've been getting everything then anyway. But was he? Maybe he really wasn't getting it back then either, right? This is all gonna come out at some point. It's all gonna come out. And I'm sure this entire town is gonna be very interested to hear what's gonna happen. So unbeknownst to me about these interrogatories, I had written my own email to Mr. Troutner on August 26th. And I attached that letter that I found on E Courts along Mr. Troutner's original letter to the mayor. And I wrote, I said, "Hello, Tom. I'm writing to you to follow up to our conversation of last week. And by the way, anybody can have my letter. You can ask Lizette for it. You can have it, okay? It's okay. The attorneys are on it. You can have the letter."
When you say attorneys, what attorneys?
I mean, the, uh, Mr. Troutner and, uh, Mr. Martin. But you're, you're governing body, so you can have it.
I explained it.
Um, so now we received, we received subpoenas, myself, Russ Perino, and Mr. Mayor Kranjak received subpoenas from 800 Sullivan. And, um, going back and forth on who was gonna represent who. And we said, secondly, I'd spoken about documents that may still need to be produced, and documents that have already been produced, meaning that the Borough had produced the 800 Sullivan. Because of course, I wasn't aware of what was produced, but I needed to know what was produced, so I didn't double produce. You would think the Borough would wanna know that. Um, there were links that were sent over to Mr. Martin's office. We were given access to those links. Two of them did not work. One link was inoperable, and one folder within those links was empty. So I wrote to him and said, "As for the links' folders that I could open, I did a perusal and didn't see any documents slash emails from when I was on council. Perhaps I'm not finding it, or perhaps it was in the missing folder slash inactive link." I was giving him the benefit of the doubt. "But I didn't see anything with my involvement. Given that I was the affordable housing liaison for almost three years, I think that we can agree that we need to look into why there appears to be a void here. Therefore, before I go any further, would you please provide me with the following information as soon as possible, but no later than when we meet at your office?" Because originally, we were supposed to all meet, until somebody gave Mr. Troutner an order not to speak to myself or Russell, or meet with us. I asked for the contents of the empty folder, the activation of all links, the signed certifications of who prepared the document production interrogatory answers. Remember, I didn't even know about this, but I wanted to know, since I didn't see any of my documents in any of those links, I wanted to know who prepared all those links. So I asked for the certification page. And I asked for a privilege log of all the documents that the Borough didn't produce to 800 Sullivan, because I knew there had to be many, many, many communications, because I was on them, with lawyers, that they wouldn't have turned over, that there had to be a privilege log.
Carol, can you get to the point?
I'm reading, oh, well, this is...
I know, I don't mean to be rude.
Sorry, but this is...
13 minutes and...
There were other...
I understand. I'm just asking you to speed it up, that's all.
Wait, just, so this is what you're talking about in...
All right, listen, go ahead. Pay, pay attention. You might as well...
No, it's, you're all talking about August of 2019.
August 26th, 2019.
Okay. No, when you were supposed to meet and all that, it got canceled. You're talking about...
I didn't say it got canceled. I just said the email was August 26th, 2019. I didn't say it got canceled after the fact.
You said you were gonna meet at everyone's...
After this email.
Right. You said you were supposed to meet Troutner at his office, and you just said that, but then somebody got instructions not to meet you. Did you just tell?
Someone. Right. Carol, can you stop interrupting me?
Go ahead.
I wanna know if it took, all, it took place in August of 2019.
I can't answer that question. You'll have to ask Mr. Troutner. I'm sure he has all the information. Or better yet, you probably should ask Mr. Wunsch, because I'm sure he's gonna be a wealth of information too. Um, please remember, okay, uh, I wanna be in full compliance with my subpoena and the judge's order, but I need to have the Borough's cooperation in order to do this. I attached a copy of your letter to Mayor Kranjak, which I downloaded from E Courts this evening. I find it very troubling that any governing body would give any attorney a direction such as this, especially to hold back documents from a time period of November 2018 or otherwise, when they were not even in control. It would lead one to believe that there are discussions from November 2018 that they would not want certain people to be aware of, even though they were not yet in control for another two months. You, you, ladies and gentlemen, need to be very troubled. You should be very troubled with the information that I'm bringing to your attention, okay? There are interrogatories that are not correct, that somebody signed off on, that were given to the court, to lead them to believe that this is all that anybody knew about how the affordable housing took place. Or maybe you didn't want them to know the work that I did, and how, and when we started. Because we started working on affordable housing plan before Normandy ever came in the picture. But see, that wouldn't help Normandy at trial if that came out, right?
What are you insinuating?
Yeah, I don't get where you're going with that.
Where, where are you going with this, Carol?
I don't know what the heck you're talking about.
Where are you going with this?
Hold on. You're not gonna turn this on me, are you?
No, no, I, I don't know where you're going with it.
I'm asking you, what you're... You're coming across, you have a guilty conscience.
I have no...
Why? Because I asked you a question, what you're talking about?
No, no, I'm talking about...
I have no guilty conscience whatsoever.
I'm telling you that you handed in interrogatories.
No, but he didn't...
We didn't hand that in. You just said that Normandy had...
I'm talking about you in general.
Well, you was the different group of people in charge in November of 2018.
So, Mayor, did you see the interrogatories?
No.
Thank you.
I did.
I didn't say you did. I'm bringing it to your attention.
Oh, okay, but...
So why are you being defensive?
I'm not being, I'm asking where you're going. I don't, I'm not following where you're going.
You're not following or no?
No, I'm not.
Neither am I.
You're trying to insinuate something.
I, I don't know what you're insinuating.
No, I'm bringing, I'm bringing to your attention that your lawyer now, the Borough's lawyer, Mr. Troutner, it doesn't matter same...
Right, same guy.
The same lawyer that told the mayor that he was instructed by this governing body not to turn documents to him. No, so if you're saying that Mr. Troutner is lying in his letter to the mayor, then say it now publicly. Did you instruct Mr. Troutner not to give the mayor documents?
I'd never do that.
Then Mr. Trout, then I would be firing him on the spot.
You're always waving papers. You're waving papers that we haven't seen. And you're asking us to take positions on it.
I asked you to give an instruction, okay? I asked you if you took positions, Ms. Savari. No, but that's what you do. You wave papers around. Ms. Savari, would you like the letter?
I'd like the whole...
Hold on a second. You know what?
Hold on a second, you know what, let me just ask, you said you would never do that, but did you ever do that?
I said I didn't do that.
No, you said you would never do it, but did you ever do it? Okay.
And I didn't do it.
So why would Mr. Troutner, who's got, you know, a stake here, do this?
I'll tell you why, because it's only fair that, that, yeah, he's not here in the venue. There has been at least two different times where the mayor shared documents with his law firm that were otherwise attorney-client privileged, and things with you and Mr....
Now, I'm gonna call you out as a liar, okay? You're lying to the public.
Go look at the court cases, you're not privileged. Hey, but look at the case in front of Judge Perez.
By the way, we have...
Look at E-courts, you're Mrs. E-courts. Go look at E-courts on the case in front of Judge Perez, pressure.
Are you insulting me?
No, I'm not insulting you, you're the one...
By the way, folks, the MOU, the MOU has no confidentiality provision in there.
But that's not true. The reason he wasn't getting paid because he couldn't...
Okay, I'm telling you, there's no confidentiality provision in there.
I am asking questions, I'm not accusing anyone of anything.
You're asking the client, I'm giving you an answer, that's why he wasn't getting the information.
No, no, you guys, no, no, here's what they do, they play this game where they don't give you any information, and then when you fight for it, it makes them...
Hold on, you can talk after, you can speak after.
No, no, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Here's what they do, they don't give me the information, when I fight for it, this is the reaction you get. You get very bad man, basically, telling you that, hey, we did something wrong, we didn't trust him, so he made the evaluation. Never mind that I am the mayor and you work for me, okay?
Don't point your finger.
This is very...
I'll point my finger at you.
No.
Hey, hey. You have an obligation to tell these people...
You are a liar.
You're not a liar, you are a liar. You are a liar.
Now, now, I'm gonna look up the emails.
So this is what they do next.
Don't look at the emails.
This is what they do next, right? They don't give you the information.
They're criticizing for that. Don't throw that devil in my face.
All right, this is what they do, they don't give me the information, I fight for it, and he's gotta stand up and be a tough guy, right?
Okay, hold on, hold on. Stop, I need everybody to...
Look, somebody, I'm gonna look at the emails.
Mr. Maranello, I came up here, the video is not gonna lie, and the audience is...
Where's the video you're gonna lie on?
I, I did not accuse anyone, I asked...
You definitely did.
I asked very pointed questions, absolutely. My name is missing from a document that you represented to the court to the...
I didn't represent anything.
The borough.
Under your group's control.
Stop, no one, none of us saw this.
That's your problem with your attorneys at the time, that's the problem with the curators.
So let's get Mr.... Hold on.
Nobody got caught.
You all got caught.
Let's just see, you're starting this problem.
Mr. Maranello, the emails that I sent to him...
Nobody's done anything.
And I'm gonna print it out and show you how many...
See, Paul, hold on a second, all right.
Mr. Maranello, Mayor...
Okay, I think your five minutes is long over.
Hold on, God. Mr. Mr., it's okay.
That's okay.
No, it's really not.
For the benefit of the doubt of Mr. Troutner, and let's give him the benefit of the doubt until you ask him, because I'm sure all of you, you have a right to ask him, what happened here?
I know what happened, I just told you what happened.
Forget that, no, no.
Forget that.
I wrote to him on August 26th, the borough clerk can give you, the email, it's on the borough server, so it's August 26th at 9:07 PM is when I sent the email. And I said to Mr. Troutner, "I don't see my name anywhere. I didn't know about this, sir." So why didn't Mr. Troutner, who knew, because his name is on this, that my name wasn't on it, because he didn't put it on it? Why didn't he correct it from August 26th?
I don't know.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Okay, that's it.
That's an actual question.
But they're all good questions.
But that was really good on Normandy's documents.
But I'm just saying, as a borough, we need to know that we are representing the facts across the board. And you shouldn't attack the people.
Look, here, here's the way, all right.
I wasn't disrespectful to anyone.
All right, everybody, the takeaway from tonight, when we leave here, when you leave here tonight, understand one thing. They intended to settle. And if they did, you wouldn't have any of this information. These conversations would not be taking place. You would not know, you would be like the rest of New Jersey.
And now you made your bed.
Stop. You would be like the rest of New Jersey that settled, because these games went on all over the place, and, but, no, sir, you can't come back.
There were some games going on.
No, sir, you're not recognized.
All right, okay.
No, sir, please.
You were cited that situation.
Please, please, sir.
Sir, please. You're the mayor, we voted for you. You're out of order. No, because I'm in the middle of a statement and you're interrupting me. This is not a union negotiation, okay? Not what you did for a living, okay?
Oh, here we go. It's happening.
Here's the thing, guys.
I was investigating the residence, what are you doing?
Here's the thing.
You should leave now, sir.
No, I'm not leaving.
No, you can't do that, sir. It takes a vote to get it out. No, no, no.
No, we're moving him.
No, no, I don't, I don't go in the gutter like you just did, sir, okay?
All right, so, so let me just say this. The takeaway here, and I don't know why he's behaving that way, but that's very indecorous. The takeaway here is, they wanted to settle everything, you would never have known, you would never have had a right to appeal, this is what they're all about.
That's not true.
And this is, these are lies, these are lies.
And so, so you could sit there, and if you think you're calling me an asshole and that, and get away with it, that's not very nice. Okay, don't apologize to me, apologize to the public, that's what you said.
You're on tape.
You're on tape.
Okay. We're stopping.
No, you have to leave. All right, who else to speak?
You're the borough.
You need to leave, sir, you need to leave.
Robert will abort.
Yeah, Robert will abort, it would have you thrown out here 10 minutes ago for calling me that.
Okay, Mayor, can we go to the next, please?
This is crazy.
This is, this is...
But you're inciting it, sir, right now.
No, you incited this.
I'm not asking you anything. You can listen to the tape, and you can hear yourself, sir, okay? And then we'll have a talk.
When you conduct the meeting, you're the mayor, we're all...
No, sir, I don't need instructions from you, sir, I don't, really. Because you're not the one up there.
I am.
And it's not easy all the time, okay? It's not easy.
Not easy for any of us. Please, can we move on?
Who else wants to speak?
Are you just...
Yes.
What?
Twice.
I said you were a...
No, 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 you said something else before, sir. You're on tape. You should apologize to the crowd, okay?
Done, I'm done.
There's no need for that, sir, really.
Okay, let's just, let's just continue, please. Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. I have a number of points in no particular order. First of all, I'm going to point out once again, that if you're going to have a time limit, you have to enforce it even-handedly, because when you selectively enforce time limits, or attempt to impose time limits on one person, but not another, you are exposing the borough to a lawsuit. You can't do it. So, you need to be mindful of that.
No, no, let's just stick to the five minutes.
From your, from now on, we're gonna be strictly the five-minute people. Be respectful, get up here, say your business, will answer questions.
Yes, we can.
I didn't say now. I said, we'll take that, then Helen said...
He's burning up here.
It's okay, I'll start you all over again.
If you impose a limit on me, after you didn't impose a limit on...
I'm gonna give you the same amount of time I gave Carol, because she had the most, is that fair?
No, it's not, just...
No one else...
That's very juvenile, just let me just speak as long as you wish.
Um, I'm, so we're very clear, I don't believe in time limits.
I understand.
Um, and that's your concept, I think time limits is antithetical to transparency and antithetical to good government. And it's only imposed by people who don't want to hear what the people say.
Is that true, Congress has time limits? Today there was a hearing, it was five-minute time limit.
That was not a hearing.
Um, second of all, I would like to point out that Ms. Parks' lawyer received tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees from the borough's taxpayers. And that's all public record, so...
Right, because they wouldn't give up the emails. And that's what Mary was asking for.
Well, having been there once, we probably shouldn't have gone there again, but apparently you guys chose to. I'd also like to point out that, you know, we're a little inaccurate on attorney-client privilege, Mr. Maranello, or perhaps a little overbroad. Judge Farrington has defined that in the Oprah lawsuits quite clearly for the borough. And she has been quite clear that not every attorney communication is privileged. They have to be looked at individually, and the determination is based not only on the sender or the recipient, but the content. And I think we should be mindful of that, because if we actually paid attention to all of the very informative things that Judge Farrington has said in the Oprah cases, we probably would have fewer problems. And if you guys were so right on attorney-client privilege, you probably wouldn't have lost so many Oprah cases. The density on the 800 Sylvan, and I do realize that you probably cannot answer me, because Normandy's lawyer is sitting in the back of the room. However, I do want to make the point that, assuming that their calculation, that they have 20 acres, is correct, and I don't think it's correct, because no one's walking to 800 Sylvan to work, to the food lab, it's just not happening, you need parking. But assuming for numbers' sake, and because they seem to divide, that it's 20, that's a density of 20 units per acre. How does that compare to what other towns are giving and are getting in court? I understand Franklin Lake's, the density is 12 to 14 units an acre. Why would we be agreeing to so much more? And that's assuming it's 20, if you go down to 15 unit, if they actually have 15 acres, you're giving them 26 and two-thirds units per acre, which is even more dense. I also, I'm tired of hearing, "We didn't want to settle." There's an email from Al Wunsch in January, saying, "There's a new sheriff in town, we want to take a new approach." There's a memorandum of understanding, which no one has seen, but which, at the, at the July meeting, you quite clearly said involved a settlement involving 400 units on the property. And Normandy's pleadings, which were made by lawyers, counsel minversa, who could lose their law licenses if they intentionally lied to the court, so I don't think they're making false statements to the court.
I never said they made false statements, I said, "I never said that."
Um, there are references to a final, the negotiation of a final settlement agreement. So I believe the final settlement agreement was either negotiated, or the negotiation started, because I don't believe that Normandy's lawyers are gonna throw their law licenses Finally, I'd like to know, this memorandum of understanding, which I understand Mr. Wunsch signed, who authorized him to sign this? He, you know, he can't just go out and do this stuff on his own. Who authorized Al Wunsch to sign this document?
The committee.
No, I want an answer from the people who would actually have first-hand knowledge of it.
I could tell you who didn't, it wasn't me, and it wasn't the governing body as a whole.
It was a committee.
A committee, not from us. I don't...
What committee?
The subcommittee.
Which subcommittee?
The Affordable Housing Subcommittee.
And, um, do the borough's bylaws allow you to authorize somebody to do that?
To sign something that's non-binding?
Non-binding and non-committal, yeah, why not?
No.
Do they, okay, so when I...
They're wrong under law.
When I, when I put in...
Show me where the bylaws is, it says that we can't have an insurance document, something that's not binding.
It's basic common sense, that if you're part of a, no, 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 if you're part of a council, if you're part of a council, you could only act as a council. Subcommittees have no authority to act.
Thank you.
But you never brought it to the council for a vote.
Because it didn't need a vote.
It needed a vote, because you had a judge...
Agreements.
You had a judge relying on that.
Yeah.
And conveniently, because you didn't bring it to a vote, the public didn't know about it until someone saw a mention of it in, on E-courts two months after it was signed.
Bingo.
Um, which is very disturbing. If, if there was no, if there was no downside to doing it, why didn't you tell the public?
That's right. What do you mean, there are no downsides?
That's right. You tell them, Carol.
All right, the public, please, the public, please keep your comments to yourselves.
Please, thank you.
But that goes back to, and as to bylaws, I believe that in a municipality, you can only have the powers set forth in state law and in your bylaws. So unless the bylaws explicitly authorize the subcommittee to authorize Mr. Wunsch, I think your actions were probably not lawful.
Right.
And, um, finally, I, um, we've had a lot of accusations about leaking. Having been on the receiving end of those, including from a former, now-deceased borough attorney, of leaking documents that I had in fact obtained legitimately, like through court filings, um, before we had E-courts, we had the civil case room, and some of us actually knew it existed and visited there regularly. So, you know, for the public to listen to these tapes, false accusations of leaking have been the stock and trade of certain people for a long time. Having been victimized by them, I take accusations of leaking really skeptically.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
Please.
Yes.
Hey, Man Metta, 75 Rabbit Road. After hearing all these other witnesses, I also saw that document, which was just uploaded to the E-court system on the 11th. Today is, uh...
13th.
13th. I don't remember, but I was shocked that, that on those documents, and I haven't fully reviewed, because there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of documents, but 800 Sylvan, while filing their papers, they attached this, those interrogatories, that did not have Russell Perrino's, or Ms. McMorro's, or other names, it even didn't have Joe Peruzzi's name, because affordable house litigation should have all those guys' information, because who, who was involved in that? That was one. Two, but I'm not surprised as to why all those names are missing, because if these people testify, or they're brought in as witness, and all those documents get introduced, 800 Sylvans chances becomes dim. Why does it become dim of winning this trial? Because what did the borough do, and was it in compliance, or had it taken steps of compliance? As I wrote in my email to all of you, but none of those documents, on my understanding, have been produced in the trial. For, they might have been produced to the other side in discovery, that doesn't mean that it has been produced in the trial. I saw the list of the documents, the list of witnesses, pre-trial order, I've read it, it's not there. It's absent. Why is it absent? Because they can kill us. They can kill us because we can't really prove our case. And, and it will become also difficult to win in the trial, because how do you explain that unauthorized, disauthorized, I should not say unauthorized, but, so let's say, a three-person subcommittee who is giving this direction to its attorneys, to that hand-picked attorney, Albert Wunsch, and I believe he's hand-picked, so that he can carry out his dirty work, to make sure that we lose this trial.
Yeah.
Okay? And that's why I'm not shocked, I'm not shocked with all this. And that's why, uh, Mr. Maranello said, "Oh, we couldn't have you at the last minute." No, because I would actually spoil the game. Because if I fought the way everyone should really fight, the borough actually probably will win. There are lots of other arguments which can be made, but they want to make sure that they are able to deliver through Normandy the hand-picked bounty. So everybody, including Ms. Savari, said, "Oh, we don't know." Then why are you relying on Mr. Mar, or not Maranello, Mr. Wunsch? You all are attorneys, you all should know, and you all should be responsible, then why don't you open it up? They don't want to open up, they don't want to give me the deposition transcripts, because I'm sure those deposition transcripts actually talk about all the steps taken. But they fought even my Oprah request. I will file, basically, I'll sue them next couple of days. Eventually I'll get it, but by the time I'll get it, and I'll be able to file papers, it'll be late. And, and I don't know what the town will be able to do, not do, but this is all geared towards, oh, we didn't authorize it. Then the judge actually relied on that non-binding order to strip our immunity, that was one of the main reasons. Okay? So I want the town people to realize, while you hear all these things, wonderful things, the council was controlled by the five members since January of this year, and they control everything, people don't get to see really what you should see, you don't get, so we paid for a guy to come and report to these few people, but yet we don't know what the progress is. Mr. Maranello says, "Oh, it's open." It's not open. You actually would have to skip what you're doing, go to the court, even if you know, because E-courts don't show which days the trials are. Okay? So they're making it very difficult for everybody to understand what's going on. There is no transparency, and the reason why there is no transparency, because we, it's been decided that we need to lose this trial. They need to give the handover through, in big wind, to 800 Sylvan, Mr. Normandy, Mr. Wunsch.
You want me to pay, sir?
Yes.
I'd like to hear the allegations.
Yes, those, yes, those are my allegations, that's the way this is conducted.
What is the allegation?
Oh, you guys are engineering. You guys are engineering. That you should know. You are all engineering this law.
Why would I do that?
Why would you do that?
Why would I?
Only you know. Only you guys know. Then why, why did you stop me from participating? Okay? You, the citizens-
The ones who were involved in stopping-
You, the citizens.
Yes.
Your attorney, your attorney filed an objection that they are adequate-
You're not our case, sir. That's why.
No. Oh, how do you know? You don't even know your case. You're making sure that you're going to lose this trial.
Look at you now. You're, you're upsetting everyone and you're upsetting me. And to be honest, I heard what you said at court. Apparently, that's what she's asking you. Apparently, in the open court, you had alleged that the subcommittee was doing something corrupt. Was that not correct?
Yes, it was correct.
Those transcripts too.
No, no, please, please fill the transcripts, okay?
Actually-
And I am correct. I am correct. That is the way this is conducted.
Right.
There are only three, there, there is only three unit difference.
I am the attorney, so-
I know.
And because you-
It's a much bigger difference, sir.
Not any basis. I will also be seeking an attorney as well.
No, no, so please do. Please do. Okay?
That's right.
Yes, so we will face it. At that time, we will open up everything. Okay?
Open up.
Thank you.
Open up.
Please.
There's nothing there, Mr. Metta.
Towneville Park, the, the, the audience-
There's nothing there.
The audience does not sound very upset, yes.
It's called slander and libel, and you're working-
Yes.
Yes.
Just officially, we can say whatever we want.
That's right.
No, actually, you can't go door to door telling people that we're crooks.
Or in open court.
Well, don't worry, Mr. Metta. I won't sue you. It's okay. You're entitled to your opinion.
Yes.
No, I don't think so. Not when it's slandered. My, my reputation.
Okay, everybody. Um, my name is Mary O'Shea. I live at twelve Irving Avenue. I'm a resident of this town for seventy-four years, and my grandparents bought their house here in nineteen twenty-four. My mother went through the school system. I went through the school system. My children went through the school system. Okay? And I know as much about Angkor Cliffs as Mr. Wunsch. Okay?
That's right.
So, um, I have, I have, pardon me?
Are you an attorney?
I'm not an attorney. I'm talking-
Thank you.
He said, you said, he knows about Angkor Cliffs. So I'm telling you, I know about Angkor Cliffs.
You're also a trial attorney.
I did not say I was an attorney. I did not say anything else other than I know Angkor Cliffs.
Just clarify, you're not an attorney.
Debbie-
That's not rude.
Stop, okay? I did not say I was anything but a resident. Okay? Thank you. All right. Um, a number of things. Mr. Marinello, when there is a committee or in the borough of council, how many people are in the committee?
Could be one, it could be three.
Okay, but mostly just not more than three? And the reason, the reason that it's not more than three?
Because you have to have, you can't have a quorum-
Right.
-discussing borough business-
Right.
Outside of, but our regular meeting.
Right, because the people that are in that committee cannot conduct borough business. Okay. So, now, we have a subcommittee for housing, which includes Mrs. Savari, Mrs. Park, and Mr. Versa. All right? Now, that committee apparently gave an authorization to Mr. Wunsch to act on the behalf of the borough by signing, which Mrs. Park had said in a previous meeting, "Well, my signature's not on there. I didn't sign it." No, but they authorized Mr. Wunsch to sign it. Okay, so Mr. Wunsch was acting on the behalf of a committee and made representations to the court on a memorandum of understanding and a settlement agreement, which is in the papers, okay, based on three people. Three people cannot authorize somebody, an attorney, to do what Mr. Wunsch did. Okay? That was not a legal action that they pushed. Okay? They're a committee. That, that action should have come back to the council as a whole. They should have come, the committee should have made, when they have committee reports on every meeting, the committee should come back to the council and say, "We are, would like to put an item on the agenda to authorize our attorney, Albert Wunsch, to enter into negotiations," which they never even said they were doing, "negotiations with Normandy, and to sign a memorandum of understanding, which should not be binding, but it will let the court know we're moving in the right direction." Um, and that should have been voted on in public session before it was done. That was not done. That was not done. And I was on the planning board, and then I was on the council. When I was on the planning board, we had Mr. Mastrata and Mr. Serenian come in and make a presentation to the public and to the board with the plan for the, uh, hundred percent affordable housing on, um, the Lions Club, the Dowell Building, the Dowell Parking Lot, the tennis courts, and the end of Condening Place. That was in public. That was all, that was the recommendations of Mr. Serenian and Mr. Mastrata. Okay? When I was on the council, I was in private session. I'm not going to say what was done, but there was discussions, all right, with them, again, covering this same property. All right? And before I was on the council, this council, the council, um, which included, um, Mark Park, Carol McMarlow, William Wu, um, Gloria, Ellen, and Ed, approved using COA funds in, in the area of, I don't know the exact amount, around a million dollars in COA funds. They got approval from the judge to purchase the Dowell property. And the reason for that purchase was for a hundred percent affordable housing. So apparently, the council that was constituted at that time and the planning board that was constituted at that time and Mrs. Serenian and Mr. Mastrata all felt that that was going to be a very good, um, plan. And Mr. Mastrata said, um, at one of the meetings that, um, he's already was getting calls from developers because everybody wants to bid on this project that was going to be coming. Okay? Um, January twenty-fourth, this council now, as it is constituted, voted and approved that plan. Now, Mrs. Park said that was because you had to. But Mr. Serenian had been championing this project within the previous thirty days. So something happened where he apparently got direction from the subcommittee, the attorney for the subcommittee or, or the whole committee, or maybe even members of the electable council, Mrs. Pa- uh, Savari, Mr. Song, that things were going like Mr. Wunsch said, there's a new, new judge in town or a new whatever in town.
Okay.
So, you voted yes on the hundred percent affordable housing on January twenty-fourth. January twenty-ninth, Mr. Wunsch is, uh, dealing with Normandy. He's having conversations to settle with Normandy. Now, we would have that hundred percent affordable housing, seventy-seven units, and the right to cure any deficiency, and they said, "Well, you go into court, and if, um, if, if it's not a hundred percent acceptable, you have a right to fix it." Okay? So you, as a council, as a subcommittee, apparently gave direction to Mr. Wunsch to negotiate with Normandy. Well, when you're negotiating with somebody, the first thing that says to Normandy is, "Hey, we're going to let you put apartments and houses on eight hundred Sullivan, because otherwise we wouldn't be negotiating with you." Okay? During that time in January through June, which I had said previously, was time where bidding should have gone out to potential developers to get people to come in and bid on building that project. Okay? You didn't do it. Okay? You dropped the ball. You, you went in to negotiate. You thought you were going to negotiate, and you're giving Normandy just what they wanted. Okay? That's just my point there. Okay? And the point is, the committee had no right to authorize Wunsch to sign anything. That's my point. Okay? Now, I have a couple of questions on other things on the agenda. Um, the retirement of David Hill, Lieutenant Hill. I would like to say, for the record, I would like to thank Lieutenant Hill for his service to the town. Okay? And I'm sure that he did a wonderful job standing in as, uh, officer in charge. And I'm sure that the reason he's retiring is because this council, the police committee, uh, decided that he wasn't good enough for, um, and I know you can't comment, it's personnel, but he wasn't good enough to be chief. So I would have left also. Um, um, the resolution of, for, um, two oh two, not to exceed for the borough attorney, um, one second. Um, oh, that, that's Mr. Marinello. I, I did mention that in the, in the caucus. Okay? I'd like to know why. Uh, he needs an increase of seventy-five thousand dollars. Can anybody answer that question? Maybe Mr. Marinello can answer it.
Keep getting lawsuits. Lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit.
But which one? You're not handling any of them.
I'm handling all the ultra ones, but you were one of the ones you filed.
Well, yeah, but you lost, you lost nine of them. So, I mean, but I mean, you, you know, to get a raise, to get a raise for losing lawsuits, I don't know if that's-
I'm not asking for a raise.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to give somebody an increase in their pay if they keep losing.
So my, my point is that if you're going to work at this town when you make your initial bid, it's no secret that this town is a tough town to be an attorney in. So whatever you bid, you have to live with. That's the deal. Right?
Well, inclusive, everything is going on.
Right.
Um, the, uh-
Good luck finding that attorney.
What?
Good luck finding that-
Well, you've seen the resign-
We have people-
And we also need more than a monthly stipend.
Huh?
That's not true, man.
Yeah. Well, um, the position that you're, uh, appointing for the tax assessor, the last time, a few months ago, when you did an appointment, there was some comments that were made where we increased the hours of this tax assessor to be available during the day and the evening for people. That was brought up the last, at the last hire. Did you do that this time?
The hours were increased for the last tax assessor. She, this tax assessor, by the way, her name is Sarah Holbig. Um, it's not in, in the resolution because we didn't know if she was going to accept. We interviewed her.
Says Jennifer Fennel, stripped it.
No, that's the prior one that-
That's who's being replaced.
She's being replaced.
She's, she's on.
Oh, that's the one I was-
Jennifer had a-
But what I'm saying, whoever you're going to hire, did you change and upgrade the hours?
She will be here, uh, three hours working, three hours during the week, and during the week, the remainder of days, she's available as needed. Just like, just like other assessors in other towns. Now, if you want a full-time-
I'm not saying a full-time, but somebody that has more office hours than three hours a week.
She's available by appointment as well. She will be accommodated, just like Jennifer was, to any resident that emails her.
That doesn't sound so good.
Okay.
Um, now, the other question I have is, um, Resolution two oh one, um, the paving of Summit Street. Um, and I'd like to know if that is all Summit Street. Is that Irving to Vinorstern and Middlesex to Palisade?
I think it's Palisade, half of it, huh?
It's, hold on. It is, it is, uh, that agree, which, which, just tell me which resolution-
Says paving of Summit Street in the borough of Angkor Cliffs is shared services with Angkor.
Okay. All right. So that, the history behind that is, as we all know, half of Summit Street is Angkor Cliffs.
Right.
And the other half is Angkor.
Correct.
So when I originally started speaking to Angkor with, uh, their prior city manager, he was adamant that they weren't paving. And I told him, "No problem. We'll draw a line down the middle and we'll just pave Angkor Cliffs. Why should our residents pay about eighty thousand dollars to pave Angkor?" Um, this new city manager is very amenable. We've been having discussions, and what I recommended was the paving from Palisade Avenue up until, uh, Castle, and then the other side of Summit to Castle.
To Charlotte.
Charlotte, no. Oh, Castle, Castle, Charlotte, the intersection.
Charlotte Place.
And then the other section is from Middlesex to Irving Avenue.
Okay, so it is that, that whole section.
Yeah. The half that belongs to Angkor. It's about eighty.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
So I actually spoke to-
I just wanted to make sure that it was the two sections and not just a piece of it. Because both of those ra- roads are terrible.
Absolutely.
I, I had called Mayor Wilds and, um, Angkor to ask him if, if they'd be amenable to doing that. He gave me the contact information for the city manager, and then Lizette took over and worked it out. So thank you.
Um, the Resolution two oh three, um, for the nineteen fifty terrace, will those people be paying the fees involved with that?
No.
Hello? What, what's the question?
Yes, the agreement, the agreement pays, has a payment for the fees.
It does. Okay. All right. Oh, and then, then, um, the, uh, two oh nine, Mr. Wunsch is also looking for more money? Um, not to exceed fifty-five hundred on top of thirty thousand for something else, which he already, which he already billed us for apparently because-
That's for affordable housing, working on affordable housing.
But he doesn't really do anything. He just sits there.
That's a common refrain by a lot of people, but I invite you to go out there and look and see what's happening.
Well, yeah, well, I, I have trouble going to courts because it requires a tremendous matter of walking.
I understand that, I guess.
Um, well, I, I really think that Mr. Wunsch has billed this borough over two hundred thousand dollars, and I think that's really outrageous, outrageous, because he is not a housing. And I told him that. I met him up in the CVS before you picked him. Okay? And I met him when he came here. I said, "You're not a housing attorney. You're a police attorney. You're a PBA attorney. You deal with dispute. You deal with contracts. You are not a housing attorney." Okay? And the only reason he got that is because he's politically connected. Okay? Because his mother was, uh, Alda Melda, and she was, uh, big on the Democratic Party. And to, to, to give somebody two hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money is, is really very unacceptable, very unacceptable. And the other question I have, the last one, is four police cars. When you look at the parking lot, how many police cars do we have now?
We have less than twenty.
How many?
Less than twenty.
Less than twenty?
I believe so.
And how many police officers do we have?
More than twenty?
Huh?
More than twenty? But some have resigned.
Yeah, I know, but, but, but it's, it's almost one for one. I mean, you know, there's only two policemen on, on duty on the road at a time, and we have twenty cars. Now we got to buy four more cars?
We had that discussion a couple of months ago. Someone asked a similar question.
I'm sorry.
I don't remember who it was, but, uh, I think eight or nine of those cars are, are being disposed of. I don't know what the right term is. Trade it in, sell it, auction it, retire it, whatever the term is. So eight of those or nine of those vehicles will be done.
Right.
I don't, no, I have to speak to the chief about that. I can find out.
But I, I think to get four at once is a bit much.
We haven't bought a car in four years.
That's fine. I, I have my car, it's a two thousand three.
And mine's a two thousand-
And I have two two thousand threes.
But it is, it is a different vehicle, Mary, and you know that. They are constantly running. They wear down. They-
They're sitting parked in front of the firehouse.
So, so the last car, the not, the last, the last new car that was put into service was December two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
And, and so now, you know, we do need to acquire some, but we also need to, um, auction off the ones that are not being used.
Well, I, I really don't think you should be buying four at once. I really don't. I think that's excessive. When you only, if you want to, if you need to buy, you buy two, because you only have two officers on the road. Okay?
Well, I like to buy one a year, but we haven't done it.
When you have the techs, you have the techs work during the day. They don't work at night. And then another thing I wanted to say, you're negotiating the police contract. How's that going?
I'll let you know when we're going to meet on Friday, next Friday.
Okay. Well, there's a couple of things. We've had the police in here en masse because they had to pay, uh, so much, seventy-five dollars for the emergency room. Okay? My husband is a retired firefighter. Okay? And we are, have the state, we pay for the state, uh, medical. Okay? Which, when the state changes the, uh, plan, it changes the plan for everybody. And if you're doing the contract, you have got to make the contract comply with the state plan. Don't carve them out. Okay? These cops make over two hundred and something thousand dollars a year. They can well afford to pay seventy-five dollars copay if they have to go to the emergency room. All right? I mean, that was so ridiculous when they all came in here making a big load of noise. Our benefits should comply with the state benefits, not separate, not different. Okay? Whether we pay for chiropractic, whether emergency room, whatever it is, it should comply with the state contract. Okay? The other thing is, you had two captains retire, and now you have a lieutenant retiring. You need to change your table of organization for the police department. And, and Leonia, when they had, they had two captains and they had their chief retire, the two captains both wanted to be chief. So they didn't, they didn't do it, and they, they actually eliminated captains. We have to get rid of some of the upper level in the police department. We have more officers than patrolmen. I understand if you need patrolmen. You, you put an ad out. You're going to give a test or something, which is fine. You want to hire patrolmen. But you've got to stop promoting people from patrolman and jump up to lieutenant in one, one sweep. And now you, next thing, you're going to look, be looking to promote captains. You should eliminate captains out of the table of organization. You don't need them. You don't need them in a small department like this. You have a chief, and you have lieutenants, and you have, um, squad, uh, people in charge, lieutenants in charge of different shifts. Really think about that. Okay? Try to save some money for the town. Most of our budget goes on the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Maria Velare, forty-five Jane Drive. Um, I wanted to ask about this, um, the bill list that we have here, um, Resolution nineteen one ninety-six, the fund. So just have a question. Does this include settlements that we've made with Chief Chaffey or any other person that we've settled with, or is this separate from that?
Separate.
It's separate. Okay. Uh, and so this money is needed just to run the borough. Is that right?
Separate.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, thank you. Um, everyone has basically expressed what my feelings are about what's going on in this town as far as the affordable housing. I first of all want to say, I'm not against affordable housing. I mean, if, if that's- I first of all wanna say, I'm not against affordable housing, I mean, if, if that's what we have to do, we have to do it. What I'm against is, is what this body of elected officials has decided to do, which has changed the face of Englewood Cliffs. Um, I wanted, you know, during the election, I got a letter from Joseph Perici Junior, and I found it very interesting, and I wanted to address it tonight with you guys. So, you know, the past mayor, Joseph Perici, was very proud to say that he and his father controlled this town for thirty-nine years, and how he did such a wonderful job on keeping affordable housing out, there were no controversies, he brought in all these corporate offices and all that. And my question is to you, um, I, most of the mailings that came out were condemning the Republican Committee of People that were here with this affordable housing issue, and the fact is, is that the Democrats, I've been here for thirty years, the Democrats ignored this situation for way too many years. What I heard about this was that, at some point, we could have satisfied our obligation for the affordable housing to be four to eight units. Shame on these people who didn't do it. Look at where we are now. And you wanna blame Mayor Kranjak and Mr. Wu? I mean, how can you even go there when your people, your, your party has been running this town for that many years? I'm concerned about what's going on. I'm, I'm concerned because once the Democrats took control, you got together and you had more special meetings than I've ever attended in my lifetime, so that you could exonerate and excuse and pay off all the people that were Perici cronies. And I am insulted, as a resident of this town, that you settled every single lawsuit that we had against, whether it was Boswell, whether it was Chief Chaffey, whether it was Miss Duffy, whether, whatever it was, you settled it all. And you hoodwinked the residents of this town, and you took our tax dollars to do your own little personal deals behind closed doors. And I think that we, as the residents of this town, have made it clear at that July tenth meeting, that we want transparency from you.
Yes.
Okay? I want to know what's going on. I don't wanna hear subcommittee, I don't wanna hear Mr. Marinello saying, "Well, you know, you could go on the elect and go here and go there." I'm sorry, people live and work in this town. We have families, and we have jobs, and we have bills, and I think we deserve answers for you. You're the elected officials, that's what you're there for, to advise us as to what's going on in our town. And I'm gonna say one more time, I've said it many, many times, I wanna know who's benefiting from this deal with this builder. And he's not interested in, in, in putting in another office building. They're going out of style. With computers today, most of the jobs are done at home. Most people don't have to go to a big office building anymore. So, what, what happened here, that you allowed this? You did not include anybody in this negotiation that you've done here. You did not include the mayor, you did not include Mrs. McMorro, you didn't include the planning board, you did this on your own, and you're holding the breath for this, and I'm holding you accountable. When this happens, it is your fault. And, and right away, when you are talking about decorum and being nice, you should take your own advice. Absolutely, absolutely. Because you are the one that attacks the residents the most. Out of this whole, you are the one, you make faces, you, you look-
Hold on. I'm gonna defend myself.
I'm not being attacked. You're not being attacked, ma'am, I am just making an observation.
I think we should look at all the videos in the past, when every word out of your mouth and Carol's mouth was, "You're disgusting."
I've never said, I, yeah, you know something? I am going, I'm gonna do you a favor, Ms. Park, I'm gonna do you a favor, and I will review those, and I will let you-
Actually, my name is Ms. Park, not Mrs. Park. For three years, I've been called Mrs. Park, but thank you for calling me Ms. Park.
Well, I don't know what your title is, I'm sorry, I mean, you know.
You know, I've been called, you call me Gloria every other day, so.
But what I, and I will look at those because I have never, I have never been disrespectful to you unless you have been disrespectful to me first. And I, and we can play back the videos, absolutely. But what I say is, from all the people on this, on this committee, you are the most confrontational to the residents of this town. We voted people in, we deserve respect here. If we're upset, we deserve respect from you. Give us answers instead.
And it has to be sustained, reciprocated, okay? I'm not getting paid for this, and yet you're going, you're telling everybody, "Someone's getting paid." You know what, I have a day job, I don't know if you work, Mrs. Valari, but I-
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you know what, I come here, the people elected me, I'm trying to do the best that I can, and every time it comes to a meeting for the last three years, you, Ms. Mary O'Shea, and Carol McMorro, all they've been calling me disgusting, despicable.
That's not true.
I'm gonna play, I'm gonna play the defense.
That's not true. You, you find one-
I'm now gonna defend myself.
I'm not here to argue with you, but you find one meeting where I called you disgusting and despicable.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight.
Thank you, yeah, I'm sure you will, because it doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist. I don't speak that way. I speak my mind.
I think of council meetings.
I speak my mind.
Six different council meetings, and you call me those words. But, you know what, the next meeting, I will probably get-
You know what, absolutely, do me a favor and do that, I would love that.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I feel that you people attack us. You don't like the message, you don't like what we're saying, and it is a continuous attack. You, you should have respect for Mrs. O'Shea, simply because of who she is and how long she's been here. But I have seen such disrespect of that dais from a lot of you, I'm not pointing you out, okay?
I know.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm pointing you out because you do it the most. And Mr. Marinello, I'm sorry, we need some answers from you too. You are the attorney for this town. My tax dollars go to-
What's your question?
I, I would like to hear some answers when people do ask you questions.
What's your question?
I don't have a question for you right now, but while I'm sitting out there, while I am sitting out there, I would like to hear more than sly remarks and kinda snide little, you know, "I really don't wanna be here" kind of a look. Seriously, seriously, I understand, I'm here. Even though I'm not an elected official, I'm here, because I care about my town. And I would like some respect from the people up there, who we vote in, who we pay, okay? And we shouldn't have to hear, "Well, you could go do this," and, I just don't, I don't, I don't get the answers that I need. I walk out of here knowing less than if I stayed home at this point. But what I wanna say is, I'm sorry, Perici has been in charge for this town for way too long. I believe he's still working in the background, my opinion, okay? And I think that people are doing his doing. And as far as Oprah's, not for anything, but I've been there when Oprah's were denied for frivolous reasons, and I'm not gonna go into it, because this isn't the place. And I really think that you should be transparent, tell us what's going on, tell us the truth. You, you didn't even wanna tell us the truth until that, until that July meeting. The only reason you, you stepped back was because you really heard what the residents of this town cared about. You didn't want a question and answer. You're using the same attorneys, yet you didn't include everybody that was involved. What do you expect us to think? What do you think we think as residents out there? That you're being transparent, that you're doing what's good for this town? Why didn't you talk to Mrs. McMorro and to the people? I, listen, to me, talk to whoever, but you should have sat down and said, "Hey, let's look at this plan." Maybe it isn't what the judge will, will accept, but let's work on it, let's see what else we can do. But you dumped that plan, and you jumped on that one. And that's what I question. And if the judge, I don't blame the judge, you know the judge only hears that Englewood Cliffs hasn't built a unit. But who do we blame? Republicans, or were what, in power for two years, three years, whatever it was? Who do we blame? It's been the Democrats who have been running it. And why haven't they done something? All we had to do was build a few units, so that a judge could look at that and say, "Hey, look, Englewood Cliffs did something." Okay? And if she knew how the residents are uninformed in this town, and how we feel about what's going on, maybe she would have some compassion, because you are the people that put us in this place. Thank you.
That's not true.
Yes, sir. Michael Tellzer, homeowner, Mount Churchill Road. Um, congratulations, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, and-
Thank you.
Mr. Ferrell, and, and, uh, thank you for those, Mr. Ver- Dr. Versa for running, and the, uh, other gentleman as well. Uh, Ms. Eastwood had mentioned at the last meeting, uh, many lawsuits, and I looked at one of them, and I was stunned to learn, yet again, I was mentioned, yet again, there's another whistleblower, police officer whistleblower, in my case, that once again said that records were changed, once again, by the former police chief. I'm not here to criticize tonight, and Councilman Verza, this is really not, not directed at you personally, I just wanna address your campaign literature, because I don't, I don't get mail here, but I happen to get one thing, and you're- What, what, what I got out of it was that you were saying that you, you defended the police, and I think most people do, when the police act properly. But what I thought was missing from that, and it seemed like it was a clean campaign from, and again, I only saw one piece of literature, was, there's a difference between a police force now and what I believe was a pathogen on the police force for, it actually started before you came in. Um, I wanted to say regarding Mayor, and I have my differences with him, but he did drain the swamp. That man is gone, and I think if everybody's honest with themselves, they are glad that he's gone. He was a pathogen, for lack of a better, better word, I don't wanna use any curse words here, and I thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. I also wanna say that if we go back and look at the, the first three whistleblowers, uh, Officer Shalob had pointed out in his, in his, uh, in his whistleblower suit about the racism emanating from the former police chief, and that was ignored by the former counsel. Before you, before you got there, I'm not blaming you for that. By the way, I'm not trying to blame any, anybody in particular, what I'm just saying. And it was finally addressed. And, uh, I'm not, I'm not even saying, I'm not even criticizing you for paying, for giving him his, his whatever, I'm not even, I'm not even going there. But it wa- but the racism was addressed, and, but it was in the first whistleblower lawsuit. And the second whistleblower lawsuit, Deputy McMorro, a man I think is a hero, and I can't say that enough, he blew the whistle regarding, regarding what happened with me. And now, I found out as of the last meeting, after Ms. Eastwood brought it up, brought up the various lawsuits, that now it's been corroborated. And I still haven't seen justice, and it's not, it's never gonna end until I do, legally, of course. Although, I wanted to, I wanted to change the topic and address this council at large, and the mayor too. And I hear a lot of noise in sense, and I understand these issues are very, very important, certainly my issues are important to me, and there are a lot of white people on this council and in this town. But there's something, I mean this, I'm, I say this sympathically, it's as if all of you can't see something in front of you, and this is regarding the affordable housing. So I sometimes think, and I'm not a Trump supporter, but sometimes I, I go to, what would Donald Trump do? Because whether you like him or hate him or anything in between, he's very effective at certain things. He cuts through noise. Now, you may say he messes a lot, as many things up as he, but it's whatever the case. So I'm thinking, as I'm watching tonight, what is everybody missing here? Because I'm kinda good at cutting through noise myself, I don't have the talent that a lot of you have, I don't have the degrees, but what is everybody missing? And, and I, my conclusion is the following. We have so many white people, we have on the council, the mayor, and in this town, what would Trump do that we're not doing? We have a town, we're, and my numbers might be a little off, we have two thousand families, and the state is telling us that we have to, I don't know where here, but I don't know how in there, we have to add approximately six hundred families to two thousand, and then in twenty twenty-five, another six hundred? Where's, where's our, with all this talent we have, where, how come this isn't being publicized? The article written on the mayor, the hit piece on you was so ridiculous, it makes it sound like we're all multi-billionaires with slaw and lawns and butlers and maid service. It was absolutely ridiculous, and, and as if like, we're, we're, as if we're paying pennies in taxes. So, why, you don't have to like each other, and you don't have to come together, and by the way, I think, I think things have gotten so out of hand that people are gonna get, more people are gonna get hurt, and I don't mean physically, and not for, certainly from, not for me, but it's, it's gotta stop, it's got to stop. Nothing to do with me. So you don't have to like each other, and I think you can debate the issues, but why, with all the talent in this town, why aren't we set, why doesn't the world know that number one, we've been supporting a high school that's been underperforming for fifty years, none of our students go there, the Star Ledger, uh, police didn't say anything about that, um, and that's, by the way, reflected in the cost of our homes, you know, it's, it's not as though it's not part of the equation. And then they wanna tear up our, our K through eight, okay? And they wanna add possibly, what is it, twelve hundred families to a town of two thousand? This is an outrage. How come they're not using the talent in this town to publicize this, to get publicity? This is a, a tremendous story besides the fact that it's happening to us. In that sense, I think that you're all failing fighting with each other, and I, I think you're really a tremendous group of talent, but you're on the scene of all. We're here debating this, and there's a small, smaller people watching it at home, come on, do something, this is outrageous what they're trying to do. We're doing our share on a number of levels, so they wanna destroy our schools, they wanna keep us in the relationship with the high school. I went to the high school, it was a good high school, I went there a hundred years ago, and now they wanna add, uh, twelve hundred units to a town of two thousand within the next five years. So on that, I'd like, I'd like somebody to please comment and say, "Do you think that this is a situation that the publicity we've gotten basically is a hit piece on the mayor as if he's defending a bunch of billionaires?" It's insane.
So, um, I suggest, I don't know if you received a, a list of legislators that we should be calling?
I have.
That, that's the route. It's a political route. Call your legislator, that's why they're there, right? They should work, they can work for you.
But what about the fact that it's not being publicized? It's such an outrage. The media, don't you think we all agree that it's an outrage?
Look, the media's doing, it's kinda like the whole fake news thing, right? The media reports whatever they're told to report by a political party, basically. Star Ledger is a former newspaper, Bergen Record is a former newspaper. They don't even report about our election, right?
No.
They don't even report about it. Nothing, nothing. Clickets.
Okay, but let me, let me, let me ask you, Mayor, you're, you're heading-
I like, we're heading A meeting.
I'm sorry, Katie, but you're here, so. If you can momentarily-
At least you have a own newspaper, okay?
Any of you can momentarily divorce yourself from, from the situation that you're in, and think, what a story this actually is, though, this little tiny community with all this talent, with, with two thousand families, and they wanna put twelve hundred families basically in a parking lot in the next five years. And they're making us out to be billionaires, but we've been, we've been supporting a high school for fifty years where no students are going, and then they wanna take apart the K through eight, and we're sitting here fighting with ourselves. Look, I understand, everybody has their agreements, but come on, you gotta, you gotta do it, I don't have the talent to do it, or I would do it, and I'm also busy with my own stuff. So, you know, and, and I'm only in that, you all can do better. There's a lot of talent here, I know some of you not well, but what I know of you, you can do a lot better. And I, I hope, I hope everybody agrees with that. Thank you.
Um, Bang Hwan, two fifty-
So first, I think, after listening so many times, I just feel like the whole town's spending lots of time and effort to unify the town, then we can fight. It looks like everyone needs to keep it open and listen, work as a team, right? We all have pride and prejudice. It has a history, it has, but looking forward, what we can do for the town is as a team. I mean, look at this campaign, how much money we spend, or how many messages we throw out to the residents. I don't know. It's to work as a team, to be honest with you. Okay, my question, actually, before the meeting, I saw the agenda, it's about 197, item 197. So is this special emergency resolution? I just wonder what is about, since it calls special emergency? Any details here?
So this is a resolution which is called an emergency. I don't call them emergencies, because you kind of know that these are coming up. I'll have the adminis, well, it's just a name, but it connotes something that's not really an emergency, and this is for severance payments?
This resolution is to fund a bond ordinance that was adopted at the last meeting. It's for retirements, body retirements that are not in the budget. Now, it's called emergency, we don't call it that, it's the state named it that, it doesn't mean it's a special emergency for whatever reason, but it's money that is not in the budget. We passed the bond ordinance at the last meeting, and this resolution just funds that portion.
Who's getting the $620,000?
Michael McMorrow, Mike Chaffey.
Yeah, it's his last payment.
Yes, it's his last payment. Okay. Michael McMorrow, Mike Chaffey, Tim Regan, and James Barbario. What is that guy?
Barbario?
Yes.
He got, like, what, 90 days, doesn't he? He's got 90 days. But he left back in January.
Mirror, what's in there? Mirror.
Oh, mirror, stop mirror.
So these are all former police officers who retired, and one is a borough administrator. Gentlemen, can you take the conversation outside, please?
I mean, one-time payment, right, for retirement, and how much is about, I mean, overall budget?
Sir, I appreciate that, but if everyone else is quiet...
William, you have it, because I emailed it?
I have. You emailed it. Yeah, you emailed the response.
You had asked the question of the CFO. Let me pull it up.
This is the response from the CFO. The maximum allowable appropriations, including all available cap bank, is 13.9 million, so we're already at the cap, so that's why the CFO reiterated that the name of the appropriation, special emergency, does not necessarily constitute an emergency, as generally defined in municipal government, as affecting the public health, safety, and/or welfare. So it's called that, but it's purely because we've reached our cap limit already.
That's what we have to file it under. I mean, if you scroll up and scroll down, the names aren't listed.
It doesn't list the folks, it just says the cost of the payout is spread over a five-year period.
As we work the chart, I just want to make sure I have it correct.
McMorrow, Chaffey, Regan, Barbario, and Mele, someone from DPW.
Oh, Scalmele, that's right.
Yeah.
So on average, how much is the package, if it's not...
It depends on the police officer.
It depends on the individual, their years of service.
So like 600,000, we're talking about half million for retirement? I was just curious, yeah, the first time...
The chart says...
It's not about 600,000, the whole thing goes through.
For package, for one person, retirement?
No, it's the whole package, for five people.
For five people. And it's one-time, suppose, not saying every year we pay?
I think it says five years, right? Is that?
It's the payout over five years, yes. That's correct.
Okay. And going forward, these are similar retirement, I mean, we're expecting someone, we are retiring in the next couple of years with a similar package, right?
Officer Hill is going, he's retiring now, so we will have to, he'll be entitled to a package also.
It's for individual packages.
I mean, this package, or we say contract, has been negotiated, or, I mean, like private sector, all this has been, the pension plan, all this has been reduced. If we can save some budget for the town, it would be good for, it's a critical time, as we say, we are paying the lawyer to fight, and also, we are trying to save some budget, here or there.
Well, as one of the other residents brought up earlier, negotiating, we have DPW contract coming up, the White Collar contract, and the police, so it is an opportunity to try.
Along with the industry, I mean, it's different from, like, GM has so generous retirement plan or pension, but it's not sustainable, it's more about cost and benefit.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, nobody else? Kind of motion to close the public portion. Go in favor. Next is the Payment of Claims Resolution 19-196, October 17, 2019, through November 13, I just don't think Serenian, Wunsch, Troutner, Miss Strata, and Powell have earned what they're billing us for, so I'm just reserving my rights on that.
We have motion from Councilman Wood, we need a second.
Second.
So he comes out from Councilman Savari, we need a second.
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Resolution 197.
Can I make a point of order on that? I want to suggest, given that a resident had mentioned, there might be a $40,000 error in the amount that is allocated to the retired police officers, I think we should check on that and make sure the number is correct. That's a pretty big number for us to be overpaying on. So I'd like to table that.
I second that.
So the motion is a ten minute?
Table it for the next meeting.
Tabling, I'm sorry.
197.
197?
197.
I mean, I could always make the changes afterwards if the amount wasn't correct, it wouldn't be more if you like.
I don't know what happens if you don't pass it, there are timelines that...
No, I think we have to pass that, but I think we should...
Can you make it subject to, can you send an email to the whole council and just let us know? So once, okay, conditional upon...
Yeah, I'd like to pass it, if that's okay, and make the corrections.
Subject to review and correction. Is that all right, Councilman Wood? That's good.
So you take back your motion?
Take it back, yep. Yes.
And who seconded it?
I'll sign.
No, it's, I did.
Well, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm, so I get a motion?
Motion? What, to pass it? To pass the resolution? We already did that.
No, you've got the payment of claim.
This is for 197, special emergency resolution, as it's written, but subject to review and adjustment of any correction.
Second.
And who seconded it?
I did. Thank you for clarifying that.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Resolution 198, Resolution Authorizing Transfer of Budget Appropriations.
The motion?
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Resolution 199, this is to approve the retirement of Lieutenant David Hill. Just a word in here, you've heard me say this before, I'll say it again, he's an excellent police officer, he's a great leader, he picked up the department when the former chief was suspended, and did a great job. So I wish him well, and we'll miss him.
Motion?
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
Yeah, also just want to formally thank David Hill, had interaction with him while he was officer in charge, and he did a terrific job during his time, so, yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Resolution 200, appoint tax assessor.
Motion?
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Resolution 201, it's a resolution to approve shared services with the city of Englewood.
Motion?
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Resolution 202, this is to amend the not exceed resolution 19-122, for borough attorney, I oppose to this.
Can we have a discussion on that? Mayor?
Yeah, you want to just term it?
Don't put no words in my mouth, Mayor. So borough attorney, I just wanted to have a discussion on this matter. So we have a resolution here to change the not exceed to additional $75,000. I just wanted to know, is that through the end of the year, and how do we come up with that figure?
Yes, it's through the end of the year. It's based on what the average has been per month over the last few months.
Well, instead of raising his fees, why don't you just manage him better, if you're going to keep him?
Well, we cut the lawsuits out, it would make it easier, then we would have no attorneys.
Don't break the law.
Keep the comments, the mayor spoke to other people, say about comments, please, public.
Okay, look, I think that when people enter into municipal work, they know what they're in for, especially in this town, so if you say you're going to charge us X, that that's what we are relying on. So I don't care whose friend you are, or whoever's helping you, but I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers that we would have to increase it.
Henry also got increases above her stipend.
No, actually, I don't think she did.
She did, it's substantial.
And by the way, you know, as an attorney, sometimes you just take on work where you're not going to make as much money, and you have to live with it, but it's like, it's your honor to do it the right way, which is to live with your word, or if you don't like it, you can leave. I mean, but I'm not inclined to give you any more.
I made the motion.
It's second.
Aversa?
We're, just a question, we're already way past the 150, correct, Mr. Marano?
I don't believe you're past the 150 yet.
He said it's based on the average, so if it's the average of 225, you'd probably be at 188 by now.
No, the, that's not accurate, actually. The, I don't have a bill into the borough yet for October, so my bills through September are under the 150 amount.
No. Yes.
Oh, is that you?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, abstain.
Some progress. Okay, 203, authorize hold harmless agreement for 19 Cliffs and Terrace.
Second.
Chang Jia Chow and Thomas Choi.
Second.
Choi.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
204, award D and L paving through the Riverside Cooperative.
Need a motion?
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
205, authorize hold harmless agreement, 27 Bay UAV, CC, and JLLC. Oh, all right. So 205, authorize execution of developers agreement between Englewood Cliffs and FCA Realty LLC.
2:05 should be...
I'm sorry.
Skip one.
Yeah, I have a pause, I got... Yep. All right, I had an old version.
205, approve purchase of fire safety equipment
under state contract A0945.
Second.
Yeah.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes. Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
206, authorize execution of developers agreement between Englewood Cliffs and FCA Realty LLC.
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
207, amend resolution 19-174, not exceed amount for Jeff Lee, Saladin, Esquire, I vehemently oppose this.
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
208, amend resolution 19-98, not exceed amount for Harbor Consultants, I zealously oppose this.
Second.
Councilperson Wood?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
209, amend resolution 19-106, not exceed amount for Albert H. Wunsch Esquire, I definitely oppose this.
Second.
Cancel person's wood?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
No, it's, sir, I know you came for something, I don't want to miss you. Are we resolved, we're all worked out, good? Okay, thank you.
Okay, no, okay, just wanted to make sure we didn't
miss you. All right, 210, amend, no, you can leave, you don't have to stay. I don't, it's not worth it. I know you're an attorney, and I know you probably had a long day, so. 210, amend resolution 1909, not exceed for Rutterman and Roth LLC. Yeah, I don't, it's, it's not worth it, I know you're an attorney, and I know you probably had a long day, so, uh, two ten, amend resolution nineteen oh nine, not exceed, uh, for Rutterman and Roth LLC. I, I've been asking Rutterman for an update for months, and, uh, for some reason, he's not giving me any updates on our labor law issues, so, but, uh, I'm sure he's talking to others on council. What's the, um, background behind the increase for Rutterman? Is there any details on what, what work led to his, for twenty?
He's, he's also handling Mira.
And Mira, I, yeah, that's right, Mira. A Mira solution, may I need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Approve purchase of police vehicles under state contract G Gentilemi. T dash two seven seven six, who's G Gentilemi?
So move.
Second.
Ah, okay.
Uh, who moved it?
Gloria.
Who seconded it?
Me.
Councilperson Wu?
Without having further details on the roster, the vehicles, the ages, um, I'm gonna abstain on this one.
Wu, I'm sorry, um, Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, um, committee council member reports, uh, I'll just go down the line for all the council members, if you just state the committee that you're, uh, working with and give us a report. Councilwoman Wu? Historical beautification, uh, no report here. Councilwoman Sa-
No report.
Councilwoman Savari?
Finance, I've been working with Chris now to start working on the budget for two thousand twenty.
Councilwoman Park?
Um, we have our last Board of Health meeting, I believe, next, upcoming Monday, so I don't have anything for as far as Board of Health. Um, as far as, uh, we're gonna have a winter wonderland in December, I believe it's, looking at the date now.
Councilwoman Park, can I just ask, um, this year, the trunk or treat, uh, just for the sake of the town, I noticed a lot less turnout this year. Um, is there any corrective action that we need to take going forward, 'cause there are so few-
Well, as far as the actual volunteers for the trunk or treat, we, we had one car, um, unfortunately, but, oh, sorry, two, and I think actually at the end, we had third, I think, uh, thought a couple of them showed up as well, but, um, I think from what Richard was telling me, that there was an actual confirmation of four or five cars, but that was it. Um, and, you know, there was actually a great turnout, it's just we didn't have any cars. So, um, I think moving forward, we definitely need to either confirm the cars, or just have like a big party for trunk or treat, 'cause, you know, we can't really, I don't know how we can ask people, other than ask them to bring a, you know, a car for trunk or treat, so, but the turnout actually was great, there was a lot of people, so. Um, so yeah, so we're gonna have winter wonderland in December, I'm trying to look at the date, I think it's the thirteenth, um, but I will definitely post it. Yeah, we'll send an email.
I think it's the sixth, I have it-
The sixth, sorry, I go to Friday, sorry, I thought I had my calendar-
Somebody sent out an invite, and I have it in my calendar system.
Oh, sorry, you're right, it's the sixth, the sixth at five thirty, it's a tree lighting, and then we'll do the, uh, the winter wonderland.
Uh, Councilwoman Aversa?
Um, I, I'd like to thank, uh, Lieutenant Hill on his service, I, I think on behalf of the entire council, I think I'm safe to say that. We all appreciate all his efforts and work over the years, and he will be missed. And that's all.
Councilwoman Arno?
Um, I don't have any committee reports, but, um, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilman Aversa for running, um, I was hoping that, uh, you know, he would win, but, um, Mayor of Clendale, congratulations to you, victory, and Councilman Wu-
Thank you, thank you.
And Councillet Barrow, uh, we have major issues in this town, and, you know, nobody wants to see the council and mayor fight up here. And I truly believe that, as you had mentioned, that we really need to come up with, uh, solutions as a group, to overcome many challenges that we have. And I, I would really like to hear from the mayor, how he's going to stop with Hunter Silverman Avenue, so, uh, please enlighten us, um, you know, uh-
So I think it starts, I think there's two parts to that, thank you for raising that, Gloria, because, uh, you right now have the ability to make a resolution of this council, to provide me with all the information I've been trying to get, so, I am going to wait for your motion to do that right now.
I'm not really sure what you're asking me to do right now.
Well, I, I phrase it for you, um, a resolution authorizing, uh, all attorneys and fellow clerk, borough administrator, to provide the mayor with all information, all communications regarding the affordable housing matter since November two thousand eighteen, simple. And Gloria, so go ahead, make the motion.
Why I have to make that motion, uh, but-
Well, I mean, you don't have to, it could be Debbie, it could be Jimmy, it could be- I'll make the motion, I think the mayor, the mayor deserves that information, as soon as he comes up with a plan for us, if that information is provided. You didn't hear it? You didn't hear what, uh, it's a right- Make a motion for the mayor to receive all correspondences as it pertains to affordable housing since November two thousand eighteen. All in favor?
I'll say yeah, I'll say yeah, I'll say yeah.
I have a vote.
No, I'll say the vote, I'll say yeah.
Yes.
I'll say yeah, I'll say yeah.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes, but I'm gonna tell you, he has everything. Yes, he has most of what he's asked for, and you know what, the next meeting, I will bring those emails, I'll spread them out right here.
Different issue.
No, total same issue, but I will do that.
Park?
I say only what he's entitled to.
Yeah.
I, I guess as mayor, it's not enough.
There's a lot of things you don't know, Mary. He's willing to, not-
I want all the communication that you're all-
If it was confidentiality agreement, I guess I would agree, but you're not willing to do that.
You're not, you, you, I don't have to do that, if you wanna vote no, that's, you could vote no, Ed.
I'm gonna vote no.
That's fine.
Because you don't wanna play by the rules.
There goes your campaign again.
That's right, that's bad.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I love the smell of self-preservation, but thank you, everyone, I love to get this.
We have more to do, we have more on this list.
So, um, we still have, um, all the new, so, um, best practices reviewed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, um, we all received a package, uh, from, um, Ms. Duffy. It's the Englewood Cliffs, um, did a principal current answers, I had some questions before we approved this. Well, I mean, we should talk about it, um, for example, in number one, you said that the Labor Council has evaluated everything, is there anything in writing regarding that? Okay. That he evaluated everything, but we're saying, we're representing to the state that he has, so he has, but it's not in writing. Alright, so just, let's get something confirming in writing from him that he did it. Um, the next issue I had, you know, it, we're, we're telling the state here that we're not using vehicles for personal matters unless authorized, and I know that certain employees at a borough who have a vehicle were giving other employees that don't have a vehicle rides to work, so, that has happened, and it's, and so we can't say to the state, uh, yes, we follow our policy, it's just not right, 'cause I know for a fact it's not right, it's not true. So we need to deal with that, so I don't think we're gonna be able to adopt this tonight, but-
No, it's not a matter of adopting it, it's a, the vote is, you received it.
You received it, that's all you have, you're voting out.
Well, if I received it and I read it, then we should correct it, right? Alright, well, while we're here, I'll highlight a few more for you. Uh, I know it's late. So we're supposed to have an initial draft of our budget in the first week of January, right? That, that, and we're, we're telling them that this is what we're going to be doing, but we never do until March. An, an initial draft? Alright, well then, can I get it when you get it? Alright, alright, so, alright, so let me, the first week of January, okay, well, that's what this says, I mean, this is, this is not what I'm saying, this is what I'm reading. Okay, so let's, I'll go back, I'll mark this up and I'll send it to you, okay? I don't want to take everyone's time, and then, so the next thing is, we have to advertise for our FJ's for two thousand twenty. The one thing I would caution the council about doing this is, when we go out to bid, let's in bold letters tell people that they have to live with the numbers that they're giving us. We're not promising a, a, a minimum amount of work, and we're not promising them a maximum amount of work, we're just promising to hire them for that amount. Um, so if they want it, they, they have to eat any over themselves, we're not gonna pay them anymore, alright? So I think the council should really think about it, make it bold, make it caps, they should all be aware, uh, of it. Alright, so that's my recommendation, when we go out to bid, you, you do that. Would the council agree?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Jimmy? Debbie?
I, I'm not understanding what you're asking them to sign on board for. Relax a second, relax a second, you're in business, you're an attorney, so, right, so what if, let's just use an example, affordable housing is just one thing, okay? But let's say some other big case comes up in this town, you want this attorney to agree today for the unknown of tomorrow?
Well, so the cases we usually- So those cases, we usually hire special counsel for, or we have insurance counsel for, right?
So basically, we just, we don't use our counsel for anything other than borough business, and we hire special attorneys for everything else.
Right, we evaluate the case, and then we cap it.
But that's the case, and that's what they have to do.
And then we, then we, we cap it with them, right, then we cap it with them, so if someone's gonna get an Oprah case, we say, look, you can spend three hours on it, no more. That's all we're paying you for, if you wanna spend ten, that's-
I think you need to outline very clearly what they're signing on board.
Well, we did, whatever numbers they give us is a cap, okay?
Right, it's gotta, well, you have to tell them what the cap is for.
Getting some over notices a month, is what that's on for.
But you, you don't have to get sued every time if you get a notice, you could do the, you could do the work, it's a good incentive to, it's a good incentive to actually get the work done right.
Get bids then that are going to be exaggerated to protect themselves.
So when we accept bids, let's, for example, for attorneys, they're putting in their hourly rate. We are the ones that are putting on the resolution not to exceed, and we're using that based on prior budgets, or we're asking the recommendation of the governing body. So we're the ones that are assigning a not to exceed on the resolution.
Okay, so now we just get to move it into the actual bid process, so they, they actually bid it with the not to exceed in there already, and they have to live with it.
But then you have to detail what exactly it is that they're bidding on.
No, borough council knows what he has to do, or she has to do, right?
What you're saying is, in other words, for the borough attorney, put down no more than, I'm just making up a number, a hundred hours for the year.
Well, you do, you could do it a dollar amount, so no more than, what is it, ten thousand a month?
Okay.
Five thousand a month, what, what do you get?
You have flat fee, you have flat fee return?
No, we, we, sometimes it works out great, sometimes it doesn't, but that's, that's a risk a lawyer has to evaluate. Well, I don't want to be paying, uh, once two hundred thousand dollars to sit in court to listen to other people.
Alright, let's move on.
Alright.
Well, let's work on that together, we'll figure out something.
If you give me the proper legal warning.
Sure.
But I don't, I don't like that.
It's easy. Just move the not to exceed amount into the actual bid, as opposed to our resolution. 'Cause the not to exceed doesn't bind the professional, it only binds us.
Correct.
Right, alright. Uh, come, anything else, anyone? Sorry, okay, can I motion to adjourn?
So move.
On favor?